City Council, the order will please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Here.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Okay, I just wanted to, before we start with council comments, just note that we're going to change the order a little bit of this evening's meeting, and I just wanted to announce that up front, that we're going to move up the two presentations to right after council comments, and then we'll get to public comment and city manager's comments after the two presentations, because one of the presenters needs to be somewhere else, and we need to accommodate schedules, so we'll take those presentations earlier in the agenda than they show. So, council comments, and maybe I'll start off this evening, and just mention a couple things. I know that a lot of people enjoyed the street festival yesterday. I heard just universal praise for the expanded size, the good vendors, and opportunities that were there for everybody. I think, as far as I know, everybody had a great time, and I think there was a real sense that that was a real step up in terms of the street festival, and good music, and just good in so many ways. On my way home from the street festival, I ended up in a situation that all day today, wherever I went, people said, "Oh, I saw you on TV this morning." And I, my take on the incident yesterday where some kids ended up in a car upside down in front of my house, the lesson that I take from that, and that I hope is the lesson that a lot of people in the Washington area who need to hear it here, is that if anybody is intent on trying to perpetrate any crime in the city of Tacoma Park, that we will get you. So, don't come here. If you really want to do it, you really feel you need to do it, go somewhere else, or you won't be happy with the outcome when you come here. It was good that police did some great work, and got all three of the young men who, it's alleged, held up the store and escaped at about, people think, 70 miles an hour through the streets, and over the speed humps, and ended up upside down in their car after having sideswiped some cars, and then they took off running. They were not injured, but they sure injured the community and the sense of safety of people on the streets, but they were apprehended. And it somehow made it onto the news this morning, so like I say, everywhere I went, everybody was, "I saw you on TV," and it's like, I didn't know I was on TV. Also wanted to mention that I went last week to a performance, really interesting talk at the Cultural Arts Center at Montgomery College, and for anybody who hasn't been to a program at that venue over at the corner of, what is it technically? I want to say it's Philadelphia, but it's not Philadelphia, it's whatever East West Highway becomes as it crosses Georgia. Burlington, thank you. That's a really nice facility, and that has recently opened, and we've talked to various folks at the college about if they have people who come to them who maybe could use a little bit smaller venue, send them over here, and if we have people who come to us who are looking for a bigger venue, we'll send them over there. It's very nice, and if any of my colleagues want to get a tour of it, or a tour of the college campus in general, I know that they'll be happy to arrange that.
Montgomery County.
Montgomery College, Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. Also wanted to mention one other thing that I found interesting, and I just thought I would read a short little blurb from the city newsletter that just came out, in case people don't look at their city newsletter. My sense is that a lot of people do, but it's an announcement that the city is now on Twitter and Facebook, where residents can stay up to date on events, news, and other community information. And the city is encouraging residents and businesses to use the new outlets as an opportunity to spread the word about local events. And there's contact information, and encouragement to send information and get things out there on social media. And the final thing that I wanted to talk about was to just take a minute to mention to residents and my colleagues, the ongoing efforts to clean up the Chesapeake Bay, and the efforts that I've been part of in the region and in the state. And I was at an interesting meeting today, the Council of Governments, where we were talking about the comments that we would be making for the period of time between now and, I think, November 8th is the date, when comments can go in on the watershed improvement plans that are upcoming, and I just wanted to give my council colleagues and the public a sense of where I think this is headed. And what became clear today was that for the areas that go into making up improvements in the bay, and assigning lows, and assigning targets, and assigning penalties if sectors don't reach those, that one of the areas that there has been the most improvement in up to date, and that there will be correspondingly less improvement in over time, less opportunities, because most of the improvements have been taken, are in wastewater treatment plants. So, as the targets are announced, and the opportunities for where improvements might take place, it's not going to take very much improvement in the area of wastewater treatment plants. The area where there is the most opportunity for improvement is in agriculture. On the other hand, when you look at what's regulated, and what the federal EPA can do something about, a lot of areas in agriculture, there is no mechanism by which the federal government can enforce improvements in agriculture. Where there are areas for improvement, and where they can come down with a heavy regulatory stick, is in the area of stormwater management. And there was consensus today that in many ways, what they're looking for is local governments to basically screen and help get efforts to regulate agriculture more, as a result of the fact that most of the regulatory foot is going to come down on local governments for stormwater management. And just a reminder that what this means for us is that there are, there are going to be requirements for retrofits for Phase II permities, which includes the city of Tacoma Park. We're not in the Phase I MS4 permits, but we are in Phase II because we're a smaller jurisdiction, and that this will probably be requiring at least 20% of stormwater actions to be retrofit. That means that for the stormwater areas on public land, that there are going to be, need to be, think of it in a simplified version, as we're going to need to find 20% of the areas of contribution of stormwater in the city that are going to need to be retrofitted. There are going to be, there's going to be very little effort to go into forcing people who are not going forward with new plans, new permits, renovations, development of private land, to require retrofits, because there's no way to do that. But there are ways for the city to have our permits for stormwater, for public lands, for the, kind of the heavy hand of enforcement to come down on us. And when you look at 20% area for retrofits, how are we going to fund those, and where are those going to take place? So, a lot of what, the efforts, the laudable efforts to improve the conditions in the Chesapeake Bay, where that's going to come down soonest, in the matter of like December, or January 1st, if we're going to be, need to be coming up with 20% improvements in stormwater by 2017. So, where that's going to hit hardest on us is in the next five years, we're going to have, and we would have had even without this effort, because of state regulations, the requirement that we come up with more money for stormwater, and when we have to do something like raise fees to city residents who pay a stormwater fee, and we have to start raising that fee by potentially considerable amounts, that people should understand that this is where this is coming from, and that this is what we're going to have to do, and there is no choice, or we will not get permits, we will not be able to do whatever we have to do with stormwater regulations. We will not be in compliance with federal regulations of the EPA. So, I just, I've been talking about this a little bit in the, in the last few weeks. There's going to be an opportunity for people to hear more about this, for elected officials on Wednesday, day after tomorrow, October 6th, in Upper Marlboro at 5:00, and there's going to be an opportunity for people to get information and to comment on that, the general public, at 6:30 at the, I'll say the Horse Center, I don't have the exact name with me here.
Equestrian Center?
Which?
Is it Equestrian?
I think that's it, but I could be wrong, but it's Upper Marlboro, and if anybody wants information on that, wants to attend, I will be going on the 5th at 5:00. I will be there for the 5:00 and the 6:30 sessions, and if anybody wants any more information, contact me. My contact number is on the city website, and I'll get you more information, but it's going to be very important to get comments. This is the opportunity, while it's still in draft form, to make it clear to the EPA that just because they can come down hard on local folks for stormwater, and knowingly do it with us screaming about it, and try and use our influence to get more influence with stronger agricultural enforcement, that that's going to be a tough row to hoe, especially in the next five years, and nobody's got any money to do it. So, I just wanted to pass along my sense of the importance of commenting now and understanding what's going on. Councilmember Robinson.
This is a joke, but when I was thinking of, how can we address 20% of our stormwater issues, I thought of damming the Sligo and having a very large lake there, as we did in the past. We had a, we had a lake on the Sligo, which certainly captures water, and then lets it out in a slower fashion. The alternative, of course, is to dig up 20% of our streets and let the water percolate through that way. But as to more serious, not tongue-in-cheek comments, city manager Matthews, I wonder if you could get for us a sense of what the management cost would be for the Tacoma Urban Park? If we were to ask Maryland National Capital Park and Planning to get that, the ownership of that park back to us, what would that represent as far as an ongoing cost? We had passed a resolution recommending that that park be renamed Gilbert Con Bay Park. Before we approached that issue, I had talked to Mary Bradford, the head of Parks, of Park and Planning, through her staff, through a staff person, who had said that that kind of renaming was possible, and that our resolution would contribute to that, to the weight of that, as it would come before MNCPC, their commission. I did a little research in the interim, and found that they do name parks after people, but that they name parks after people only if they, those people have contributed to Park and Planning, the well-being of Park and Planning. And we got a note back from Park and Planning last week, I guess it was saying that they won't rename the, or their policy is not to rename parks for people. I think the reality of that is that they are not, they will not rename parks for people, unless those people have contributed to Park and Planning, the well-being of Park and Planning. So, we're in a little bit of an information, a hazy information area. In any case, if you could get the ongoing operating estimates, that would be helpful. And I just wanted to note, I think it's a sad story. There's a house in my ward at 118 Sherman Avenue that was the subject of a drug bust last week. Really great police work, as far as I can figure out, and a very large quantity of drugs and cash were found in this house. And the bliss-served administrator in, for that area, for that neighborhood, did some research on the alleged, the person who was arrested, last name of Moore, and there was one link to the city paper, a long article in the city paper some years ago, about this man, and, and there was a city paper reporter who spent a good bit of time with Mr. Moore. And that's the sadness. Mr. Moore is a long time, has been in trouble with the law for a long time, and was described in this article as one of the first generation of crack babies. In other words, babies whose parents were addicted to crack cocaine. And I found it very sad, and the, the story led to the information that we have about the arrest on Sherman Avenue, and I just think it's a real tragedy. All the players, his family, and the district government, he was, lived in the district, grew up in the District of Columbia, the court system, police departments, there was a million dollars spent on his behalf by Covington and Burlington, Burling, in the 90s, I believe, trying to defend him in court on a murder charge. It goes, I mean, it's just an amazing story. So, it's a, it's another chapter in that story, and I just wanted to note that it's a sad one, in my opinion. That's all.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to commend the police for their action as well. Young man who came into Ward 5 by Sligo Creek, and then was seen on Edinburgh Lane, and then ran up Erie on his way past Flower and onto Greenwood. He pretty much startled the neighborhood, I would have to say, and folks were pretty concerned about what was going on, and we were very grateful when we got the news that the police had resolved the situation. The other thing is, I want to say was that for the past 10 days or so, I've been out of town, and during most of that time, I was in Los Angeles, the other side of the country, and surprisingly, many people have heard about Tacoma Park, or maybe not so surprisingly, and I got a lot of very positive comments. I also heard, you know, what's happening in various places around Los Angeles, and it made me feel like, hey, man, we gotta, we gotta step it up here a little bit, because they're gaining on us. You know, several of the cities like Venice and Santa Monica are working pretty hard on their own initiatives in the area of environment, and sustainability, and use of new media to communicate with residents, things like that. So, I look forward in the next few months to helping the city move along in those, in those directions, so we can keep up our reputation. Thank you.
But we won't follow the example of Bell?
No, no. Many examples we will not follow, Ron, yes.
Councilmember Clay.
Oh, yeah, one of the things we won't follow from California. Let's see, Wednesday is International Walk to School Day. I don't know, are you, are you coming, Mayor Williams?
I'm going to three of them in the morning.
Awesome. All right, so Tacoma Park Elementary School and Piney Branch are going to be doing the International Walk to School Day with the other Montgomery County schools, and Tacoma Park Elementary School is going to meet here, at the municipal building, and begin walking at 8:30. I bet you're going to be there, aren't you? Awesome. Are you going to wear a costume? It's a costume parade, you didn't know that?
I think I'll have to be in a jogging outfit that I don't own yet, since I will be at East Silver Spring, where Transportation Secretary Lahoud will be.
Awesome. And then, let's see, Piney Branch is meeting in the parking lot at the Franklin Apartments, where they did it last year.
At what time?
Been walking at 9:10, which is going to be interesting, since school starts at 9:15.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is this a disconnect there?
Well, I think they're gonna, maybe we'll be starting class a little bit late for International Walk to School Day. I also went to the street festival, had a great time, terrific party. I'm going to be having annual Ward 2 Halloween party at my house on October 30th. I'm not sure what time yet, but sometime that evening, we're going to have our haunted house. My Girl Scout troop is going to help with the haunted house this year, so absolutely, it should be very exciting. Also, I attended a SASCA meeting this past week, and we had representation from the Police Department, and Recreation Department, and the Planning Department. It was very nice, very well attended. So, if you live in the SASCA neighborhood, they're looking for more folks to join the Neighborhood Association, and help with things like getting out newsletters, and communicating, and communicating with other people in the, in the neighborhood, and helping to lobby City Hall and other places. And also, I got a call from a constituent about a big amount of erosion, and I haven't gone to look at it yet, because I haven't had time, but apparently there's a lot of erosion along Sligo Creek Parkway, where the Carroll Avenue Bridge is at, and some of the other folks have been concerned, and they called Park and Planning, and they were, have you seen it?
The downhill, some of the road.
They said it's as big as it's ever been, and I should probably be cautious when I go look at it. They didn't really get a very good response from Park and Planning. I forwarded the message on to the Public Works Department, but it's probably worth following up on. And my last comment, I was, I was really looking for a Lorax costume this week, but I couldn't find one, because I wanted to come as a Lorax. So, maybe I'll have one by the time I have my Halloween party, but I wanted to speak for the trees tonight in my, in my council comments. As you know, the Lorax story starts out with, "I am the Lorax, I speak for the trees," and it's a story about how a community loses its trees as people pursue consumption, which they represent in the book, is needs, and which are these kind of five-armed, socky t-shirt sorts of things. And so, I want to talk about that in terms of our tree ordinance, and the conversation we had last week. And one of the ideas that I wanted to put out there in this conversation, to begin with, is, you know, is first, do no harm. And one of the issues that I have with cutting down trees to install solar panels is that it violates this first do-no-harm idea. Trees are there, they help provide oxygen, they help with stormwater, they provide shade, they provide habitat, they do a lot of different things. One of the other things I wanted to address is the notion of solar power versus coal mining. And somehow, if we don't install solar panels on the roofs of our houses, we're therefore perpetuating the consumption of coal, and therefore, coal mining in communities in West Virginia, and that somehow makes us NIMBYs. I don't think that's a rational argument. It's not a solar versus coal mining kind of argument. If you don't want to get your power from coal, then you can buy wind energy. Other markets are available, and it won't matter how many solar panels we install here in Tacoma Park, or anywhere, it's not going to stop coal mining in West Virginia until the people in West Virginia decide that they're going to stop doing coal mining, they'll be selling the energy someplace else, it's a worldwide market for energy. So, I don't want people to think that, you know, if you don't, somehow, if you don't support cutting down the trees for solar panels, you're, you're perpetuating coal mining in West Virginia. You know, you could take this argument another way, you could say that every time you buy a solar panel, which, a tungsten-based solar panel, you're supporting the blood mineral trade, where people are mining minerals, and in the process of mining the minerals, those folks are being, takes advantage of, there's a lot of murder, there's use of that money to buy weapons in those areas, and you look at those areas in Africa where that's happening, you know, you could make a similar argument for that, people do make those arguments. I don't think if you buy a solar panel, oh, you're responsible for the deaths in Africa either, and I just don't think that that's a fair argument to put out. The other thing is that we really need to take a balanced look at how we do our green building activities, and we've talked about that some here, about when is it wise to spend money? What should we spend money on? You know, should we go for lead efficiency, different things like that? And I think we have to be careful about green gadgetry, and green gadgetry kind of becomes the sneed, essentially, and the solar panels are better than the trees, and, you know, all the green things that you can do, all the green things that you can buy, all the green gadgets that you can have are somehow better than the most basic things that you can do in your home, which is to reduce consumption, to plant trees, to live in your natural environment in the best way that you can, and to do that first, before we go to the gadgetry. And I just wanted to put that out there. And if I find a Lorax costume before October 30th, I promise to wear it for the Halloween, for the Halloween party.
Councilmember Schultz.
Oh, I just, I'm sorry to see Chief Recucci just step, step out for a moment, because I wanted to thank him again for the quality work that his, his staff did this week, this week, with regard to this robbery. And I think that maybe the meta, the motto that should be over the entrance to the Police Department should be something taken from the fair, fine state of Texas, where they say, "Don't mess with Texas." I think we need to have a motto that says, "Don't mess with Tacoma Park," so the criminals will just say, "Hey, let's go some other place." But he's not here to say it, so all that is lost.
No, it'll be forever on the web.
Just a reminder that this Thursday night, on October 7th, for my constituents that live in the Tacoma overlook, to know that the mayor, myself, the chief, and the city manager will be coming there for a meeting to welcome all the new condominium owners to the city of Tacoma Park, at least those who are new to the city of Tacoma Park. And to also want to say, to thank Tyrell North, who lives there, he relocated into that building from another neighborhood in Tacoma Park, for all of his help in coordinating that, that meeting. Next, I wanted to comment about the library, Department of Library had this, this Saturday morning, a wonderful program, I think it was called Tacoma Readout, or something of that nature. And that is, is that, it was held in this room, it was a, the purpose of it was an opportunity to read children's stories that had at one time or another been banned by one or more communities in our wonderful country. There was about 20 selections, and I took the opportunity, anybody could volunteer to read one of these books, or an excerpt from one of the longer books. This place was almost full. I volunteered to read a book, and my wife volunteered to read a book. One of the books that I, the one I read, we sort of read it together. It was a blast. It was just loads of fun, standing up here, reading a children's story to a room full of people, all ages, of course, including a mess of kids. And, and it was just sort of generalized, low-level chaos, as you would expect when you have lots of kids, and doing that, but every, but it just seemed that it was, it was great. I want to just basically praise the Department, the library people for doing that, because it was, it was something that I think was good for all of us. You know, sometimes people, sometimes question the value of a city having its own unique library, as distinguished from just saying, "Well, what's wrong with the Montgomery County system?" Well, there's nothing wrong with the Montgomery County system, but I would just say, this event, this past weekend, is why it's important that we have our own library. And I do hope that they will repeat it. The library was able to do this, they, they got a grant to put it on, and of course, funding sources are always, in the future, are always something. sources are always, in the future are always something, a little bit hard to predict, but it was worth repeating. Finally, New Hampshire Gardens Civic Association had a meeting this week, and they are getting ready to install their kiosk up at the corner of Canaback and Coquelin, which was being funded by a small community grant. It's gonna look very much like the kiosks that the Park and Planning Commission installs in some of its parks. And they're also getting ready, they're planning a neighborhood-wide yard sale. I think it's going to be this, sometime this month. But that's just the news from Ward Six, and I thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to follow up on Councilmember Schultz's comments, and I'd like to introduce my niece who's visiting us from Houston, Texas. She brought along that slogan of, "Don't mess with Texas." And Chief Rakucci should know that Councilmember Schultz was saying that we should have a "Don't mess with Tacoma Park" slogan over the Police Department after this weekend. I too appreciate the police work that happened yesterday, and most especially the excellent work that went on in Ward Four earlier last week with the arrest of the individual from Sherman Avenue. I share Councilmember Robinson's sadness that the individual has such a long history of drug use and criminal activity, but I think certainly glad that he's been removed from our streets, and I also look forward to council discussing maybe ways that we can work better with the young people in our community to keep them from following a similar path to what Mr. Moore had. And then lastly, I just, I joined Mayor Williams at the street festival yesterday, and I agree with him that it was an excellent event, and I thank the staff for their help in supporting that event.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to just comment, last week I asked a question about the plantings on the hillside at Tacoma Park Elementary School. When the renovation plan was put forward, there was a great deal of concern about the view of the bus ramps slash parking lot that goes up the side of the hill now in front of the school around the renovation, and we were told by TPS, or MCPs, that there would be significant plantings to screen that. So we asked questions about that last week, and we're, have been told that in, within this month, they're gonna begin the plantings there at the school, so that's much appreciated. I also want to thank the police force, and also be very thankful that no officers were injured during the events. As we all know, the officers put their lives on the line to protect the community daily, and when major events like this happen, it makes us aware just how dangerous that really is, and so I'm glad that no one was injured. Number three, just a big shout-out to Roz Grigsby for the street festival. I know many people put effort into that, but Roz in particular is the OTBA Executive Director, had a lot to do with organizing all of that, and it was a fabulous festival. Next is up as sidewalks. So we had a community meeting on Boston Avenue about putting in some additional sidewalks on Boston Avenue, in particular along the, in front of the park there, the Silver Spring Intermediate Park, I believe it's called. And basically, they'll be coming out with a flyer, and I'll distribute more information on Listserve, but the first step is to simply improve the sidewalks that are there, and then install the sidewalks on the southern side going up to the park, which are much needed. The second thing about sidewalks is that I think where, we have a little bit more time, or probably those sidewalks will probably be done before the winter's upon us, and will be done during the fall. I think it would be a good time during the winter, since we're not gonna do additional sidewalks, to take a moment and have a pause, and have a discussion and presentation to the council. We've now done sidewalks in, this will be kind of the third neighborhood, Boston Avenue's kind of a sub-neighborhood of North Tacoma. There was work done in Sligo, was it Sligo Hills, or, there's another community, I think in Colleen's Ward, that where there was some sidewalk work done. And so I think we should just have a presentation on what's been done, what it's cost, understand the process to involve the community, and just sort of take stock. And, you know, anytime we do significant work and spend dollars, I think it's wise to pause and learn along the way, and I think we could learn some things about increasing the amount of community engagement around that, because it is a big bit of work that goes on in people's communities, and also assess the trade-off of doing, prioritizing these improvements over the building new sidewalks, which I know the council made a conscious effort and vote to do that, but now that we've gotten into it and seen how much it costs, and how much money we have available, I definitely think we should assess, you know, that situation. Number six is related to the tree ordinance. At the next discussion about tree ordinance, I hope two things can happen. One is we can make more progress about actually talking about the specific opportunities to improve the tree ordinance. And the second thing would be that we could have a solar panel expert there, which I think would be helpful to have us, help us understand the trade-offs. There's a few items in particular that I think are ripe for improvement related to the tree ordinance, and one has to do with, and these aren't new, I'm not taking credit for these, but just, one has to do with giving people credits for planting trees in advance. The second has to do with the ability to plant, use public dollars to plant on private property. Trees are a public good, they have public benefit for people, whether they're on your property or another person's property, so I think there's actually a very legitimate legal case for expending public dollars to do it. And in the response we got, we didn't get to the level of conversation that I would have liked to, but in that response we got from city staff, it reminded me of something of Joe Edgell, that Joe Edgell said during the task force for the environment presentation, "If you want to find a way not to do something, you can find a way to do it." And I felt like there could have been ways to find a way to do it. For example, it's not perfect, but if you wanted to give people credit for trees, you could decide, "We'll only give them credit for trees if they buy their trees through the tree purchase program." We know when the tree is planted, we know someone has officially planted it, we could probably even use the GSI, GS, what's that?
G.I.A.S.
G.I.A.S. system that Todd has to track those, and if they're still there and a person needs to remove a tree, they could get credit. Similarly, in terms of planting on private property with public dollars, again, it seemed like there was this, "No, we can't do it," versus, "Yes, there are ways, you could construct a legal contract where people understood the responsibilities and what they were getting into, and what the city's responsibilities were, and what the landowners' responsibilities were." And then lastly, related to solar panels, again, I think this is a trade-off about how we can improve the ordinance, and I wouldn't suggest we should go about clear-cutting trees, or cutting down a lot of trees to put up solar panels, but in the situations where the city arborist has approved a tree removal permit, and there's some replacement of trees, it does seem reasonable that there should be some credit given to doing things like putting in solar panels. Not full credit for all the trees, but partial credit, because part of what the solar panels do and the trees do are similar, and part of them are different. You know, similarities are, they reduce apartment footprint, they cool, you know, they have the potential to keep a house cool, for example, and things that aren't the same is, you know, there's not stormwater management control for solar panels. And then lastly, we are, next week, gonna be taking up the task force for the environment report with staff recommendations, and I hope that we get more things around can-do solutions related to that, and not things to use, again, Joe Edgell's quote, that, "For refined reasons why we can't do things." I much hope that the city staff will come forward with how we can do some of those very important recommendations, not reasons why we can't. Thank you.
And city manager had a quick comment on the sidewalk issue.
I'm just gonna remind the council that there is a discussion scheduled towards the end of this month, I don't remember the exact date, I think it's the last meeting in October, to review the Speed Camera Fund, where things stand, what work has been done. And most of the improvements that Councilmember Wright alluded to are being paid for out of that fund, so hopefully that would give you a good overview.
But maybe we could expand that a little bit also, to include the process that we're using to engage the community would be helpful.
All right, then we're gonna skip ahead to the presentations, and first we have a short presentation from Lucy Nair on the Safe Roots to Schools program.
Good evening. Thank you, Lucy Nair here, I'm the Safe Roots to School Coordinator, and I've been with the city three years now. So when I first got here, I really felt like a nuisance going around and asking people at the schools, and parents and kids, "Why don't they walk to school?" And then I quickly learned that I had to show them really how to do it, and we had to pave the way, so to speak. So I'm here to tell you a little bit about my favorite topic, Safe Roots to School, and some of the progress that we've made over the past three years. The reasons why we want people to walk to school are obvious, I'm sure many of you walk to school, and we know that it's better for your health, it's good for the environment, and anyway, it's fun. So that you might remember from when you were walking to school. You can see signs of the Safe Roots to School program all over the city, we have done some infrastructure projects, we've also done some smaller-scale off-road projects at Tacoma Park Middle School, we worked with students, and also with a very industrious Eagle Scout, who helped us to rehabilitate the trail behind the school, between that, and that the kids use on the way down to the community center, and so that's been a very successful project that we've been able to maintain for three years. We also have installed bike racks at Tacoma Park Middle School, if you go over there and see them, they're really nice, they say TPMS, and they have a plaque that these were paid for by the Tacoma Park Safe Roots to School program. On any given day, you might find thirty bikes on the racks there. The Safe Roots also funded the Missing Sidewalk Study, which I suppose we'll be talking about later in the month. Also, we work with the Police Department on enforcement, Safe Roots funds enforcement activities, details with the department, we look mostly at speed and pedestrian-related offenses, and we have some details going out during, we did in September for Back to School. So you can see that we've paved the way for some of the more fun and exciting things that we do with Safe Roots, and one is Walk to School Day. Thank you for the plugs for Walk to School Day is Wednesday, October sixth. All four of the elementary schools who participate with Safe Roots will be participating in Walk to School Day. That will be probably up to thirteen hundred children walking, and many parents too walk on that day. It's really a lot of fun. Piney Branch does an excellent job where they do a beautiful ceremony when they arrive at school, where they raise the flag and do the pledge, and then they sing the National Anthem, and it's really something not to be missed, it's beautiful. Tacoma Park will have their program also, and I will be at East Silver Spring this year because I lobbied hard for one of my schools to be the focus school in the county, and I've been working with a variety of partners over the past month or so to plan the program there. We invited many guests and dignitaries, and we're happy to host the Department of Transportation, Secretary LaHood, County Executive Leggett, and many others. And I'm just really excited to showcase what we do in Tacoma Park, and how we do it so well. Also, another guest would be Lauren Marchetti, who's the Executive Director of the Safe Roots to School National Center. So this is the clearinghouse for information on Safe Roots data and information, and so she's coming to see our program, and I'm really excited about that. I have a new brochure, it's outside, take a look at that, and she'll be getting one of those too. So we also do, in addition to Walk to School Day, we do bike rodeos at all the schools who want them, and we do crossing guard appreciation, which is just a wonderful, no-frills-but-win-win program where we set up a table, and the community brings cards, gifts, hugs, but all very low-key and lovely hugs and kisses for the crossing guards all day. It's really, really beautiful. The crossing guards appreciate it, and they really deserve it. One of the signature programs of the Safe Roots to School program in Tacoma Park is the 5K Challenge, and this was something that I did because I wanted to work with the PTAs and the families all year long towards a goal in the spring, and that is to incorporate an in-school program centered on walking or running and pedestrian safety that would culminate in the 5K race. All four of the elementary schools participate, and they all four benefit from the program. I do not take the proceeds myself, but they do, with the stipulation that they continue with pedestrian safety, health, and health-related programming through their PTAs. So this first year, we had three hundred and fifty people in the rain, and it was a beautiful day, everyone really enjoyed it. So the next year, we thought, okay, we would pie in the sky, hope for five hundred, and we had five hundred and forty people come out and race that day. It's really exciting, it's a beautiful community event, and the hope is that it will continue for many, many years to come, long after I'm gone, the PTAs can continue with this pedestrian safety and Safe Roots-themed event that benefits the community and their school. So come on out on May first this year, you can start training now. The beauty of it for me was that now, everybody knows what Safe Roots to School is, insofar as the people who are important to me, the parents at school, and so I've become sort of the go-to person on pedestrian safety-related issues in the community, and I field questions and concerns from community members on a regular basis, and try to help them with resolution for those concerns. So this is the part that's more the race. I do give a check to each of the schools, both years I've been able to give each of the four schools a check for fifteen hundred dollars. The schools decided in the very beginning that it would be split evenly, and then they can use that money for continued programming. A new program that I have is the Crosswalk Simulation Program, and that will be where I go into the schools and work directly with students, small groups, specifically on crosswalk safety, and so I'm excited about that. These are some of my partners, as you can see, I'm not banging on doors by myself anymore, I have quite a few partners in the community who also care about pedestrian safety and getting kids to school safely, walking or biking. And now, from here, we have the fifth grant cycle of Safe Roots coming up, the application will be due in November, and I will be out in the community in the next month, talking with principals at the schools, with parents, and also with students about what their concerns are, and try to shape the program according to what the community needs. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a wonderful program, and I want to make sure that we mention the fourth school, which is Rolling Terrace Elementary School.
Rolling Terrace, yes.
To make sure that they don't feel slighted.
Thank you.
Any quick question or comments? Councilwoman Clay?
What's the bike rodeo? And you put bike racks at Tacoma Park Middle School, did you put them on the property? I'm curious, because some of the kids were talking to me one time at Piney Branch, maybe it's been two years now, about wanting to ride their bikes to Piney Branch, and they told me that Piney Branch won't let, you can't have bike racks on the property at Piney Branch, and were they correct?
There are two bike racks way down, and a lot, some of the kids who ride to Piney Branch park here.
But they're not actually on the property, those other bike racks are actually on the property of that.
Apartment.
Apartment complex, I think.
Okay. The biking is going to be sort of the centerpiece of the next grant, I hope, that's what I would like to talk with the principals about, encouraging more biking to school. And one of the- And one of the -- we can ask for bike racks for additional schools.
So there's not a prohibition on putting the bike racks?
It's school by school in Montgomery County. So I need to talk with the principals. The bike rodeo is a program that teaches kids bike safety skills in a fun and engaging way. They come in, we have a presentation. It's all done by WABA, the Washington Area Bicyclist Association, and they have a short presentation of about a half an hour, and then there's a course, and WABA brings bikes right to the schools. So that each -- we do a helmet fitting, which is very important, and then all of the kids have a chance to ride the course, and they've learned -- then they go home with materials, and they've learned the basic safety skills for bike racks.
Cool.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to our second presentation, which is briefing on plans for Tacoma Piney Branch Park. And Suzanne Ledlow is here to introduce Ellen Mashaki and maybe somebody else from Park and Planning.
Yes, Linda Combs from Park and Planning is here as well, and we're going to just turn it over to them. They've got also a short PowerPoint about the plans for Tacoma Piney Branch Park. Linda, I mean Ellen?
And thanks for hanging in there. I'm sorry we didn't get to you a little sooner. I know you've got a big presentation and conference tomorrow on...
Skate parks.
Skate parks. A national conference that you're hosting?
No, just a local type.
We've got people coming in from a variety of places.
From other places, yeah. In fact, interestingly enough, I came here probably five or six years ago, and that was my first entree into the city council, talking about skate parks and listening to three hours of testimony. So here we are. The update on the park, we have good news. After all these years of my telling you, we're going to do this and we're going to do that, we're actually going to do it very shortly. Our contract is very close to being signed with a construction company, and we hope to begin construction either at the end of this month or the beginning of next month. I wanted to let you know that Linda Combs and I have worked very well with our engineer on our staff as a threesome. She's a landscape architect, I'm a planner, and this project required quite a bit of coordination with the city, with public art, many, many aspects to it. So it's been a long haul, but I think you'll really like what you're going to see. The construction is scheduled to take a year. We can't tell you right now what the phasing of the project will be, meaning whether the skate park will happen first and then the artwork will happen. We have to sit down with the construction company once they're on board and determine those things. The cost of the project was $2.3 million, which included all aspects of the project, and we're very happy to say that the bids came in at a price where all the bid alternates can be included, which includes a major upgrade to the basketball court, which I'll talk about a little bit more. These are the new features of the park, and you can see there's quite a few. A beautiful sculpture by Judy Sutton Moore. I don't know if many of you know her, but she's a local resident, and she was the person chosen by our staff to develop a beautiful sculpture that will be 20 feet tall. You'll be seeing a picture of it in a couple of minutes, and she's got a personal interest in it because she lives in the Tacoma Park area. Second thing is an accessible loop path, which is quite common with most of our parks. People are very, very excited about having an opportunity to just go to the park and complete a loop around it. The third thing is a skateboard park, which, as I mentioned, has been a big, big issue. I haven't any pictures of it because we'll be involving the local youth in the design of the skate park. So at this point, all we have is a shape, but we don't have a design. Another feature is a new picnic shelter with a trellis and special paving. You'll be seeing an elevation of that shortly. Two new playgrounds, one at the school, which is replacing the park horse, which was really not meant to be play equipment and became quite dangerous at a point. You'll have absolutely beautiful new equipment there and one close to the current location. A new full-size basketball court with many features that are extras, breakaway rims, fiberglass backboards. It'll be really nice. And an improved court near the school. The existing volleyball court will be upgraded, and we will be creating a wetland in Tacoma Woods. We've also planned to improve the Darwin Avenue parking lot, which has not functioned very well up to this point. We hope to direct the park cars coming to games to that location and have it signed much better. Our other two, couple of things we have are improved entrances at Darwin and Grant Avenues, accessible ramp from Darwin Avenue parking lot down to the picnic shelter level, which will allow people with disabilities to be able to park at the parking lot and get down to that lower level. We have a program for invasive plant removal, some of which has already begun by our staff and will be continuing. New landscaping and improved stormwater management. And I'm going to let Linda talk a little bit about the landscaping and the stormwater management and the playgrounds, since she's the landscape architect.
Yeah, just a couple of slides with some images here. This is an overall image of the park. And let's see, is there any way to kind of point to things on here? Is there a...
The mouse might be there.
Okay, there it is. Okay, so you can see this is the Grant Avenue entrance that Ellen referred to. There's a set of stairs that comes up, as well as an accessible route that comes up to the top of the hill. This is a seating area, and the two sculptures, which are by Judy Sutton Moore, will flank either side of the walkway. There are actually two 20-foot-tall stainless steel trees with prisms in the leaves. You'll see that. It's really pretty interesting. The loop path that Ellen talked about goes over here near the school, comes back over. There's a bio-retention facility right here. This is the volleyball court. This is the upgraded basketball court. Here's the skate park. There's a stormwater management facility back here. You recall that this is a very steep slope here, wooded slope. This is the parking lot, which we are upgrading. We're actually widening it by about three feet because right now it's very narrow. And there's some extra pavement in there that really doesn't need to be there right at the entrance here, so we're sort of necking that down. One of the important features as we were going through the design process was the ability for the park police to be able to look into the park from this point. So they should be able to pull their cars up and have a good view down into the park and the skateboard area from up here, as well as this loop path is actually five feet of asphalt and five feet of grass pavers. So it will accommodate police and maintenance vehicles, so they'll be able to drive through a portion of the park. This is, right here is the picnic pavilion with the trellis and special paving. There's a really nice playground right here, as well as a beautiful playground, which you'll see some images of soon for the -- used by the school. And we are adding a few bike racks near the school parking lot and also over near the volleyball court. This is an expanded view of the Grant Avenue entrance, and let's see, right here are the two tree sculptures by Judy Sutton Moore. These are the sculptures. Once again, stainless steel. They're intended to look like trees, but some people also think they look like birds. And these lines right here represent, these are the prisms. This is a, just a catalog cut basically of the picnic pavilions, and this is a custom trellis structure which will connect the two. And at the ground plane is a special paving, which is a nautilus with inlet. It's all stone. This is the school playground. We did work with the school, the principal, and some of the parents and children to come up with this design. This is a ring of, this will be hard surface, this is asphalt, which is painted, I don't know if you can see it, but this is a ring of children. They'll be painted all different colors. I think there's about 75 of them holding hands. And this is the world map. Over here is the playground. You can see it actually better up here. This is a poured-in-place rubber surfacing with really nice playground equipment. There's a little track around the perimeter of it, and then there's some foursquare courts and also a big chessboard. The school had made some large chess pieces, and they asked that we put a chessboard into the painting of the playground so that they can bring their pieces on and play. This is a view of the equipment. There's a sort of a more traditional piece, and then this new type of equipment, which is called EVOs, which is really fun. The kids will like that. And that is the end of the PowerPoint presentation. I'm happy to, Ellen and I are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilon, any questions? Councilwoman Rehm.
What, I'm curious about the trees that are going to be protected by removal of invasives, or if there are trees that are going to be removed, if you have account for that. In particular, how you're going to handle the stormwater effort in Tacoma Woods? Do you have comments about that?
The, we're creating a wetland in the Tacoma Woods, and that has been, we've spent quite a bit of time working on that plan. All the plants are going in, they're appropriate for the conditions, and will also have deer protection around them. The area that's probably the most sensitive that we've spent an awful lot of time on is the area of the slope where the accessible ramp will come down from the parking lot down to the picnic pavilion. We actually had the care of trees out, and they, first we staked the location of the helical piers. We're using helical piers to hold up the boardwalk because there's a lot less disturbance to the tree roots with the helical piers. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's like a drill, drills a pier down in. So we first had the locations of the piers surveyed, and then the care of trees came out with an air spade and exposed the root system so it can make adjustments to where the pier locations would be, to really try and minimize the disturbance to the tree roots.
This is a path, an elevated path between the Darwin lot and the...
Yes, it's a boardwalk.
Gazebo kind of thing? Okay.
And it's ADA accessible. And it's also, you know, it's intended, it is an accessible route, but it's also will be useful for people with strollers or, you know, people carrying coolers down to the picnic pavilion. It'll be much better access than walking down the set of stairs.
And the, what will need to be done to get the wetlands in place? What kind of excavation or other modifications to the existing landscape?
It's all done either by, in the most sensitive areas, either by hand or with very low-impact equipment. We had the care of trees on board throughout this process, working with us. In areas where the trail, the loop trail goes through the critical root zone of trees, we're doing an above-grade trail section. So we've been very careful and will continue to be throughout the construction with our inspectors and our arborists will be on site during construction.
Is it fair to say, is it fair to say then that you're leaving the trees that are there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are you planting any more trees?
I don't have the number offhand. I could get that for you, but we are planting a large number of trees. But in the, we're recreating the wetland, that's mainly herbaceous and perennial material.
Okay. Last question, I promise. There's a swap mentioned of land that swaps current ownership down Tacoma Woods goes to the ownership of Park and Planning. Got that right?
Actually, it is theirs. The city will maintain the area of the wetland that's being created. That's part of our, part of our agreement. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is that it functions very much as a stormwater management facility, and it also helps us with some of the runoff from the public works facility and making sure that that all works together carefully as a whole. That's actually not a land swap. Where the land swap is, is the back of Hefner Park. If you go behind the fence of the developed part of Hefner Park, there's natural land in a big rectangle at the north end of Tacoma Piney Branch Park, and that area will be swapped for some area that we're currently using, this Park and Planning land, by the end of the public works facility. And this kind of regularizes our public works facility land, but it also appropriately gives the natural area. Looks like it's still part of Tacoma Park, Tacoma Piney Branch Park, to Park and Planning. So that's a swap that will be going forward.
So it does not, it does not affect this stretch of land that goes right down through the Stream Valley?
That's correct.
And then up towards the middle school?
Well, I mean, there is some of that because it's off the back of Hefner, but it's not the section that people are more familiar with between Piney Branch Elementary School and Park Ritchie.
Right. Okay.
Okay. And if, a quick follow-up. The question I had was, is the city the issuer of the stormwater permits on this?
Yes, and they've been working with us on all that. And in addition to their careful work with the trees, also our arborists looked over the plans many times and attended many meetings.
Okay. Councilwoman Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate both of your time here, and it's great to see the work that's been done behind the scenes since you last were here. It's great progress and good to see this thing moving forward. Glad to see the attention you've paid to stormwater management. Appreciate that, and I know that people have asked about the wetlands and whether that was really going to happen, and I know many people will be interested to see that is included in the plans. I'm particularly glad as a representative of the homes that are along the other side of the valley, to see that you are paying attention to the invasives that are on the Park and Planning property. I know that that section along there is several different owners, and you only, the county only owns part of that, Park and Planning only owns part of that. The city owns a part of it, but the school system also owns some. And of course, like I said, on the other side, there are a lot of single-family residences, all of which share the invasive problem. And I just wondered if you have plans for trying to coordinate some of the work, because as you know, those invasives, if you move them out of one area, they're going to just grow back in very rapidly. A concerted effort would be probably have a higher potential for success. So I'm just interested to see if there's any plans for coordinating, especially with the school system, for the removal of those invasives.
We have been working with the, many of the homeowners along Grant Avenue, but, and we've been in discussions with the school, but we haven't really talked specifically about invasives on the school property. You know, I think we're prepared to handle the invasives on the park property and work with the adjoining neighbors, you know, if they want to join in the effort. I'm not quite sure, you know, beyond the park property.
Sure. It's probably unfair of me to launch that question right tonight, but it is something I'd like you to consider, and I'd like you to also think about the residents along Ritchie Avenue, which is on the other side of the valley. There is a significant kudzu infestation in that area, and some of the other invasives are bad, but not as bad. And I know the residents along there would certainly appreciate some help in attacking that since it is kind of growing out of the valley, and it tends to spread very rapidly. So if you could give us some thought and certainly be willing to help you to work with the community and getting some community help to address that.
We do have a program called the Weed Warriors program, and that might be an appropriate sort of venue that we could tap into, a resource that we could tap into to assist the homeowners.
Yeah, I think what we've experienced is that, you know, the residents by themselves have not been able to do it, and Weed Warriors are not allowed to use some of the herbicides that the Park and Planning is, and kudzu is not something you're going to conquer with your hands. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clay?
I live in a household with an almost nine-year-old who goes to school at Piney Branch. The other day, we were at Roscoe's for the Haiti fundraiser, and she cornered county council member George Leventhal, who happened to be sitting at the mayor's table, to let him know... know that while she appreciated the opening of the pool, she was not happy with her year of being bused to Grosvenor Elementary School and then to come back and at the end of a year of being bused to Grosvenor where she didn't think they had appropriate play equipment. She's now at Piney Branch Elementary School where she doesn't think they have appropriate play equipment and the kids up at Tacoma Park Elementary School have all this new equipment and they can't go up and use it. Um, Piper's not one not, that's my, my daughter, Piper's not one not to advocate for herself, so we'll do a little advocating for Piper and her friends at Piney Branch Elementary School. Um, so you said you're kind of not set on, you know, what you're going to do first or what you're going to do second?
Well, there is a clarification there. Um, part of the special conditions, um, in the bid documents require that the, there's a window of time when the cut can work on the playground that's near the school.
Mm-hmm.
They, we don't want them, we don't want heavy equipment in that area while the school is in session. So we're creating an access route, a fenced, a separately fenced access route around the perimeter, um, right through this area here. There'll be a, a fenced route so that the contractor can get back to work in these areas. And then he cannot work in the school playground area until school is out and it's...
So that in summer?
Yes. And then the playground has to be completed before school starts in the fall.
All right.
I, that doesn't probably make you happy, but we, safety of the kids was our, our first concern during construction.
I don't want you to run over my child, but, uh, you know.
But I think once the playground is built, it's going to be very, very special and it's going to be one of the nicer playgrounds we've built in some time. I think so, you know. All I can say is I hope it'll be worth the wait for...
Do you think that the parking lot is going to be finished before next September when the Folk Festival wants to use it again? It's ticking off my list of personal, personal issues.
Since we don't actually have the contractor onboard yet, um, I can't, I don't want to say for sure, but that is supposed to be part of the first phase of work.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming tonight.
Okay, sure.
Councilor Roy?
Well, thank you. Thanks for investing, uh, $2.3 million of the tax money we pay to the county and they don't repay us for other things into this park. I appreciate that. Um, I have a quick question about phasing and noise. So just when you, I realize you don't have the phasing, but you've done a great job so far communicating with the, the Grant and Darwin Avenue residents. Just as we get closer on the phasing and know the times of the construction where it'll be particularly noisy, if we can, um, engage the residents to make them aware of that. Those sorts of surprises, um, are tough for residents to take and people are very understanding when they know in advance. Second is a question, is there a bathroom anywhere on the site? Uh, is there a bathroom facility located anywhere on the site?
There will be porta-potties. We're crossing our fingers. We, we have them in the plan, but you've been following what's been happening in the parks with the porta-potties, so we're hoping we will have them here.
And, uh, do we know, is there a planned location within the design if we were to get porta-potties?
Yes, there is and I can point that out. It's right here. Can you see where it's at?
Yeah, yeah. And then, just a reminder to city staff, if we can, um, as much as possible coordinate with the redo of the bottom of Grant Avenue with the, the promised plan to, um, put in some plantings and vegetation that would screen the view, um, looking down Grant Avenue to the back of the community center, um, uh, as this goes forward.
Yes.
And we're sort of waiting for the details and things really to be underway.
Right.
So I just want to remind us of that.
The end of Grant Avenue will be a staging area for the construct, for part of the construction, so we have to wait till that constr, that staging area is disbanded before we do our work.
Okay.
Councilor Slippard?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is really a great presentation and really appreciate you taking the time, uh, to do a, a job. I have a very quick question, um, and I may have misunderstood the plans, but as I recall, there's a set of tennis courts there currently and those are going to be replaced, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And you have no plans to put tennis courts some, some other place?
No, there, the tennis courts, um, and this, maybe Ellen is better able to answer this because that decision was made during the facility planning stage.
During the facility planning stage, we got in touch with Tacoma Park Middle School and the staff of the Montgomery County Public School System and they upgraded the courts up there. And so that was kind of our balance was to give the kids an opportunity to have the skateboard park be a little bit larger.
Right. That's fine.
And Councilor Robinson had a quick follow-up?
Yeah. Quick question on, on the porta-potties. Um, the current, there are currently porta-potties on the, on the field there, or, um, by the, um, by the gazebo structure that's currently there.
It's in the building.
They're provided courtesy of a chimney sweeper who has two very large advertising signs on the, uh, on the ball field. And I'm wondering if your intent in putting a new set of porta-potties there is to allow that kind of advertising in the public place?
At the best of my knowledge, it's still been, been, you know, entertained because of the budget crisis, so I, I can't tell you that's not going to happen.
I'm sorry to hear that.
My sense is that will be a continuing bone of contention for some time as, uh, everybody deals with the current budget situation and, uh, how the porta-potty situation will play out in that. And I wanted to thank you all for the hard work that you've put on, in on this over, you say it's now 10 years?
No, I think it's more like five.
Okay.
Well, yeah, before Ellen though, there were several years when we did the, when we did the early concept plan.
Because I know it's, it's been a long process and we haven't seen you here in some time.
Right.
And, uh, we, we were sorry not to, uh, see you before, but we're glad to see you now. And, uh, really appreciate the fact that, uh, the, uh, design and the elements have evolved to this point. It looks like a really nice plan and I'm glad that, uh, at least in one way, there was the, uh, the long time necessary to get to this point in that it brought the, uh, bid environment and this project together at a point where, as you note, all of the bid alternates can be accommodated within the budget. Um, this is the, like many other projects now, it's, it's a great time to be doing capital projects, given the, uh, the economy and all the factors that influence how that works. And so, uh, I'm, I'm glad to see that, uh, the residents of this area of the county will be getting what looks to be a superlative, uh, park facility and, uh, it will join the growing list of, uh, facilities that have been and are being upgraded down here with the, uh, fire station about to have the, uh, grand reopening at the end of this month and the, uh, upgrade of this room and any number of other facilities, the elementary school, a lot of, uh, capital projects are coming to fruition in this time period and it's, uh, nice to see the addition of all these facilities. So we appreciate all your work.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Thanks very, very much and, uh, hope, hope you get to, uh, go home long enough to get a good night's sleep before your efforts tomorrow.
Thanks.
Uh, we'll now circle back, uh, we'll, uh, skip the, uh, additional agenda items and the agenda scheduling updates since we've already kind of taken care of that and we'll go to the public comment period. And this is the point in the meeting where anybody who has any comments to make on any item that is not on our, uh, special session or regular session, uh, can take this opportunity to comment. So it'd be anything on our work session item later this evening or anything not on the agenda. And if you'd like to come to the podium and identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes and, uh, thanks for sticking with us out.
Okay. My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. Your official peace delegate. I want to tell you that I enjoyed the street festival very well, as well as I did the Folk Festival and I notice every year Tacoma Park is getting better and better at it. We had beautiful music, good corn dogs and good people down there. I didn't see any problems at all down there, even the weather held up. You know, I found out that, hey, you didn't even really need a jacket. You know, the weather was pretty good down there, uh, this week, you know, and I thought it was great. Also, uh, give an update on the demonstration. We had the One Nation Working Together demonstration. We, we had over 100,000 people down there and I'm hoping that Tacoma Park was well-represented because I was down there and so wasn't, uh, 180,000 other people down there too, so. I want to tell you people, uh, we all got to work together and stand up. Another thing is, is coming up in 29 more days, we got to stand up again and be counted. It is time to vote. We cannot have a low voter turnout this time if we want to keep, uh, O'Malley as our governor. We want to keep our, uh, candidates in office. We cannot stand to have a low, a lower voter turnout and expect to get things done because it's not going to work that way. I don't, I've done a lot of work for peace and justice, a lot of work against the death penalty and I don't want to see it all, uh, all thrown away because, uh, people just don't want to get up out there, took us as in vote. You know, I want to see this, this time in 29 days, I want to see a lot of people out at the polls, anybody watching this, remind your friends and relatives that not only is it a right to vote, but if you care about your country and you care about your city, come out and vote, it's your duty. Also, a way to show our city the appreciation we have done for our Folk Festivals and our entertainment and stuff, and the, and the good place we have to live, one way to show our appreciation is to get up, stand up and vote. V-O-T-E. Also, I'm glad to see people are paying attention to their trees, but also I'd like to know that, uh, people should not be afraid of the arborist. He's only helping us and the trees turn over a new leaf. So don't forget that. You don't? Trying to help us, both us and the trees turn over a new leaf and many more to come. Also, I'm going to ask, are they planning on doing anything for, uh, Halloween for the children this year in the city, uh, this year, like having a big, uh, Halloween party like at a community center or a parade for the children? They get the parade down Maple Avenue in their costumes and then come in here and parade across the, uh, the stage in our new, uh, renovated auditorium here so they can all show off their costumes and stuff? To their friends?
I'm, I'm not sure of the details, but I'm, I feel sure that there will be the parade like there is every year and the...
I would love that. I would love that because that's our future, uh, future leaders is our children. Thanks for letting me share. Remember everybody, please, come out and vote! Vote, vote! If you want peace, vote for it. If you want to respect our city, show it by voting. Don't just sit home. Tell everybody, come on out and vote, it's imperative. If we want to keep the headway we've made, we've got to stand up and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to comment?
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Frashell at 7300 Baltimore. Uh, I want to thank the council again for being able to present to you. Um, just two quick items. I have the results of our four-day petition on, uh, the park, uh, primarily Bell's Eagle Park and parking problems around there that I'll happily give you. In four days, we had over 70 signatures and a lot of them with comments that I think hopefully will be very useful to the council. Um, I also received, uh, an email from Ms. Matthews concerning the city attorney's viewing of the code and I appreciate the email. I disagree with his viewpoint on it. I would be happy to get some more information on, on how he, or how the city attorney's office came to that decision, actually I don't know the gender. Um, I did run the code by my attorney to get a reading behind it and her particular opinion is that both Code Section 142170 and 83210, which hopefully I have the right ones, require the city to issue permits. Uh, however, the fee structure is open to the discretion of, uh, the city manager and, and one of the points that she made is if the term "shall," which is used in both of those Code sections, is determined to be permissive rather than mandatory, then, for example, the language of 142180, which is, "All persons using any public park shall abide by the following rules," then therefore would also be voluntary and would not require any of the people using the parks to actually follow any of the rules of the park. And as a, a quick aside, uh, there was a typo in the city, uh, the municipal code where in 83210, it refers to Code Section 1424170, which instead should be 142170. And as far as going on from here, uh, the chief has been very kind to open himself up to hearing, uh, comments from the public and now that all the Jewish holidays are over, I hope to be able to take advantage of that. And Nancy Cohen is a, a member of North Tacoma Park also has, uh, offered to use her house to host the chief in a public meeting. Uh, she's also part of the chief's advisory board and I want to thank her publicly for being willing to do that. And hopefully at some point in the very near future, we'll be able to have an opportunity to host the chief and hopefully also council member, right? And be able to work out some of these issues ahead of time and see where we're going to go on from there. Um, and as a last thing, I want to echo the previous comments. My son was out doing videotaping for, uh, Mr. Wilson's TV studio class. He's an eighth grader at Tacoma Park Middle School and he was at the festival and he was able to interview people from a very wide area that all came and were able to enjoy the festival and apparently had a very, very good time at it. And so I'd like to second that it was a great day to be in Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment?
Hello, how's everybody doing tonight? I'm Jerry Fuller, the 46th Oswego Avenue, Ward 4 resident. And, um, I was going, just commenting on the ladies idea and just telling them that was a good idea, having the kids walk to school. And also, my question, I don't know if y'all can answer it, is, um, the plans for Tacoma Piney Branch, the park, it's a trail that goes from Park Ritchie to Tacoma Piney Branch to Public Works and all the way to Tacoma Middle School. Now, will the plans for the park affect that trail or?
No, the idea is to, to be able to keep the trail. Um, they are actually going to be fixing the entrance a little bit from off of the Park Ritchie property with the permission of Park Ritchie. So, um, there'll be a gate at that point to go on, um, through the trail. There may be some restrictions while the construction's going on, but other than that, the idea is to keep the trail.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll move along to the next item, which is the city manager's comments.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Rakucci is in attendance this evening and wanted to make some remarks regarding the events of the weekend that have been alluded to by several council members.
And, and Chief, welcome and I'm sorry if, uh, some of your officers who joined you had to leave again to, uh, go back to what they were doing. Uh, we took a while to get to you.
Uh, first I want to recognize before we get started, Keith Hubley, who's here tonight, he was the officer who was doing some quality of life enforcement that led to our big drug bust and, uh, we're really proud of Keith. It was his shift that was here earlier, but they had to go back on the street. And I just wanted to recognize him and for you to see the officer that made this stop that has led to a really tremendous arrest and investigation, which does continue as we speak and I just wanted to recognize him. I want to thank every council member and, um, Ms. Matthews for their kind comments about the work we did over the weekend. I would like to update the community because there's been numerous emails today and questions and phone calls. We arrested three juveniles who have been charged as adults and are now incarcerated in the county jail. Uh, one of the questions that came up, uh, throughout yesterday and today, was there a chase by our police officer? So there was no pursuit. The officer in, in question was actually on another call at the time. We had a critical missing person in the middle of this other event that was going on and he was working that when this car come flying by down, uh, the mayor's street and, uh, ended up, he, uh, radio and he thought he saw the car because it went so fast by him. He said, "I have a red car that just flew by me," uh, and, uh, thought it may be the suspect vehicle. He started to follow it and as you well know, it had already overturned by the time he got to, caught up to it. We did just employ our K-9 officer to apprehend one suspect. I might add, all three suspects were apprehended by, uh, Tacoma Park police officers who, uh, confronted all three suspects. Uh, we did have a bite with the one officer, our K-9 officer, who was the officer that was the first on the scene, caught the first suspect. The second suspect was caught by one of our officers who was off duty on his way home, but it was in that take-home car that you gave him and was able to, uh, catch our defendant. Third officer was caught by, uh, our policeman of the year, Detective Charlie Holtzel, uh, who confronted the suspect and, uh, had to forcibly take the suspect into custody when he failed to comply with the commands. Um, another thing that's come up, uh, last night and several times today, as I was sitting here, that's why I wasn't in the room, answering another email and phone call I got, there's some question about notification to our residents. I think everybody in the city knows we send out alerts and advisories as soon as we can. This was a very fluid situation with three suspects, multiple police agencies, two helicopters, multiple victims, an auto accident, a stolen car... multiple victims, an auto accident, a stolen car, and trying to catch all three at once and investigating everything else, along with a critical missing in the middle of this going on that was suicidal, what we were trying to find, which I might add, we did find and bring to a successful conclusion. It's the weekend, we do have people on call. We did put everything out as quickly as we could. There are going to be times when we're not going to get something out as fast. I will tell you, I've been doing this for 42 years, and I don't think I've ever worked anywhere else where we get out as fast as we do here in Tacoma Park today. To the residents that we're concerned, when you hear helicopters and sirens, best thing to do is go in your house. You can call the station, and our dispatcher will eventually get to your call and will bring you up to date as much as he can on what's occurring. We do try to get it out as fast as possible, but there are going to be times when the most important thing at the time is apprehending the three subjects, as we did Sunday, and it worked out to our advantage. Our supervisors have a lot on their plate. The fortunate thing yesterday is we had our detail going. We had the festival, so we had extra officers on the street. Montgomery County Police was tremendous in their support. We were able to get the U.S. Park Police helicopter and Maryland State Police helicopter. We're not big enough to have a full-time PIO that can be around the clock and be here so we can put this information out, and I think you all know Kathy Plevy works very hard to get information out as fast as possible. When I was contacted, I contacted her. She returned to her home where she's able to send things out and was able to put it out as quickly as we can. But our priority yesterday was to catch the bad guys, which we did, and very pleased with the work we did. And we will continue to prioritize the safety of our residents is the first thing in catching those three guys. Got three, what I consider criminals, off the street, and hopefully I will see them in jail as they are right now. The other thing I want to remind the public of, we refuse to be the victim on the 26th of October, 6:30 to 9:30 in this room the next day from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. It's a great program. If you need any examples of crime occurring, we've unfortunately had a few in the last few weeks. So, I want to urge people, it's for home security, for parents and children, personal security, personal protection, workplace safety, technology, security and travel security. And our senior citizens, we have a special program the next day, and I want to urge you. I was told today we'll be able to try to arrange some transportation for some of our seniors. So, please spread the word throughout the wards, and we really want to see. We only have about 30 signed up so far, I'm a little disappointed in the sign up. Still not too late, but we need to get you signed up so we can get the program, stuff ordered for our program. Any questions?
It looks like there may be a couple. Councilmember Schultz?
Based on what you've just said, I gather you've received a number of queries as to why it took you quotes so long to get out an explanation of why helicopters were flying around, et cetera. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes, sir. That's why I'm here tonight, to try to explain, we try to put out as fast as we can, but we can only do so much.
Of course, the city council, of course, is in an advantageous position. We sometimes get this information an hour or two before it gets released to the public. But I just think that it's ridiculous for citizens, and I'll just say this out loud to everybody, that citizens should be that impatient when you're involved in a major management of a major crime scene that's spread all over Tacoma Park. And I think we, I would encourage our citizens, if they see stuff that's mysterious and a little worrisome like helicopters, probably realize that there's helicopters on our side, not the enemy, and just relax, and in a little while, you'll be able to find out through our, through the work that Kathy does, you know, what's going on. I think you guys get the information out extraordinarily quickly. Thank you.
Councilmember Clay?
I don't entirely agree with Councilmember Schultz. I'm certainly happy with everything that happened, though. I really appreciate it. My house borders along Lincoln Avenue, and Piper and Karen and I were walking home from the street festival, and Piper, who seems to figure heavily in tonight's conversation, was dragging along behind and got slower and slower until she was almost out of sight, and I counted to 10 and made her run. She came running, crying all the way, and I said, "You know, what would you do if there was a car speeding through here and I couldn't get you out of the way fast enough? I have to have you here closer to me." Then I came around the corner onto Lincoln, and there was our neighbor Fred telling us all to get into the house. He said the police had been by and wanted everybody to get into the, get into their houses and stay in their houses. So, we hustled onto the house and got in the house and stayed in the house, and heard the helicopters overhead. So, I think it's a criticism of the police department, but if there's some way we could provide support, not, I think, not to answer the sort of curiosity question of what's happening out there, but if there really was a critical need for people to stay in their homes, we had a mechanism for that. So, do we have a, you know, one of those auto reverse calls?
We have a mechanism, which to be used in considered critical situations.
This isn't one?
Well, we had two of them in custody within, by the time the mayor probably walked outside and saw the crash, when our cars pulled up on the scene, within 10 minutes, we had two in custody. We were chasing one and through the backyards. If it was a point where I thought it was life or danger, they would make the decision to use the reverse thing, and that's done. It's just each situation's fluid. This was as fluid as it could be, in the fact that you've got a, the K-9 officer comes over the hill, he sees he's got a crash, he wasn't even sure what he had at that point because he couldn't put the two and two together. He gets out, the citizens were great in pointing us in the direction because they'd already ran from the car, and we caught two within 10 minutes of that, and then we eventually, it took a while for the third one. Though I think, anytime there's criminals running around with guns, it's critical, and it's critical for us to be able to manage it, and obviously, we take it into account. I was advised the minute it happened, they, I had a lieutenant and a sergeant on the scene, we were talking back and forth, and ultimately, it's my responsibility to make the call if we're going to use reverse 911. What did not call for it in this situation, it's one of the reasons I'm here tonight to explain, there are options to do it.
Well, don't get me wrong, I think police work is great. You guys are terrific. You've done a lot of great work. I'm very sad that three 16, 17-year-old boys decided to toss a good chunk of their life away with semi-automatic weapons and car stealing and robbery. But I think it's a reasonable question for the constituents to ask about the alert notification. I think it's fair.
I agree, it's reasonable. That's why I'm here tonight, trying to explain...
So, thank you for your...
...take the situation. I thought it was important I'd come here tonight, much to update, but to talk about it because we've taken a lot of hits today, and I wanted to address them.
I haven't heard anyone saying, asking the question in any kind of a negative way. They're just asking about how the alert process works and what happens. I'm sorry, but you've heard people, I can see by the look on your face, you've heard people that ask it in a negative way, however, I have not. I've just heard people ask...
I've had a few emails that were a little wrong.
How the system works. I had one person ask me how we now shut down the Elm Avenue circle so that people can't enter the neighborhood from there, and I'll respond to that one. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Robinson?
Glad to hear. Quick question, what does a quality of life enforcement detail encompass?
Well, quality of life is drinking in public, littering, disorderly conduct, becoming a nuisance, trespassing. Good examples in Councilman Siemens' war where they sometimes stand in front of the store and harass some of the senior citizens that want to buy there. It's quality of life issues that we're looking at.
Is it both on foot, is it on foot, on bike and car, doesn't matter, it's whatever seems appropriate at the time? Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Rakucci. Again, I'd like to thank the officer for the quality of life enforcement that led to the arrest. I appreciate your attentiveness and also the results of that effort. Thank you. And Chief Rakucci, again, I think the residents, I would have to agree, they raised reasonable questions, and I know that that was, as you said, a fluid situation, and I think that just looking at things that I'm involved in, I know that many times when I'm done, I look at it and say, maybe there's something that could have gone different and everybody would have been happy, but, you know, you're happy when the results are successful. But I also am confident that as a manager, you always look at these types of situations and see what changes you might make for the next time that would make things go even better. So, I trust you to look at that, especially with the communications aspect. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say that I was very pleased with the level of professionalism and everything involved in the incident yesterday and everything I know about the incident the week before. I just really appreciated the efforts that all the officers from all of the jurisdictions put in on this. I know all of my neighbors felt the same way, and I came away from it knowing that there were various what-ifs that people brought up about, you know, what if there had been somebody walking down the street with a stroller, what if, what if? Thankfully, those what-ifs were only what-ifs, and it's always, it's always good when an outcome is that no one was physically hurt. There is a lot of hurt that is associated with all of these kinds of incidents for many people involved, but the thing that I took away, as I said earlier this evening, was I hope this enhances our ability to get the message out to the people who need to hear it, that you don't want to come to Tacoma Park to perpetrate a crime because we will get you. And the more that word goes out, to counter what you were talking about a few weeks ago when it was, well, Tacoma Park is an easy place to go rob people because they have stuff and they don't protect it, to the extent that we can turn that message around and make it, don't go there because their police are close by, they're on it. That's a good message to get out there.
Well, there's at least 11 people sitting in jail now in the last two weeks that had courtesy of the Tacoma Park Police Department. No, I appreciate the comments from the citizens. That was the reason we were here tonight, to try to explain what we do and how we do it. In every event, there's a lot of decisions going into what we do, and the safety of the public is first, safety of the officers, and the safety of our entire community. I mean, the one thing we don't want is anyone hurt. And I mean, when I go through yesterday, and we critiqued it early this morning on what we could do and how it went down, and I went through with the leadership that were on the scene, and you've got to remember, we had two, we had a major event going on in downtown at the same time, which has always, there's always problems, there can be problems, there hasn't been, but we look at that, and we appreciate the input from the citizens. And the reason, as I said, was to hear from you all tonight, what you're hearing, and to get the message out. We are an open department, we have nothing to hide, and we work hard to be candid, and the message is out there now that, you know, our department works very hard arresting these criminals who want to come into our community, and we're not the only community. I did send a message to our chief manager today and Commander Johnson, thanking them for their assistance, because we do appreciate the cooperation, and it was a good teamwork yesterday. Thank you.
Good, thank you. City manager have other?
Sure. For Mr. Lovell's benefit, I just wanted to note that the Recreation Department would be holding its annual Halloween events on Saturday, October 30. Also, just for the record, wanted to note that included in the council's agenda packet was the annual report of the Board of Elections, as well as the actuarial report for the police retirement plan. Just a couple of things very quickly to call to your attention as you review this report. One of the most important factors of the actuarial valuation is to set the recommended contribution rate for the next fiscal year, so in this case, fiscal year 12. As a reminder, the current contribution rate is 34.82%, and the recommended actuarial rate, which can be found on page one, is 34.83, so essentially flat. Another item to note, which is on page seven, it's the asset statement for the plan year that ended June 30, 2010. Certainly, one of the things that has helped is that the market has rebounded somewhat over the past year. So, there was a realized gain in the plan of just under 465,000, which is certainly a better picture than it was a year ago. And then on the very last page of the report, which is page 15, this is a requirement of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, it's Statement Number 25, and one of the things it calculates is the funded ratio of the plan. With the dive in the market a year ago, the funded ratio was 28.1%. That has increased to 33.5% as of June 30, so it's certainly going in the right direction. I would note that is a somewhat low funded ratio. This is a very young plan, just as a reminder, that basically is less than 10 years old. So, that's not entirely unexpected, that it is a little bit on the low side in terms of the funding ratio. So, I encourage the council to take a look at this, and feel free to contact me with any questions. The Pension Board did review this at its meeting last Thursday.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Siemens?
That was a leftover.
Oh, Councilmember Wright.
Just so I'm clear, is the actual accrued liability what we're supposed to have in the bank now to ensure that we would meet our, what the actuarial payouts would say we would have based on the age of the various members in the, that are eligible for the pension?
I believe we talk about this every year, and my recollection is yes. I think there's a much more technical explanation, which I can dig up and get that to you, but it is to, what is the amount that we should have in the plan to fund those benefits that have already accrued as of June 30 of 2010?
Councilmember Robinson?
I guess I don't have a specific question, but I'll just note...
All right, then we'll move on.
Yeah, I'll just note that the first, was 2001 the first year?
Yes.
Okay. And so, our funded ratio, the amount we kicked in was 21%?
Well, actually, yeah, that would be, that would be the funded ratio. One of the issues with this plan is that service credits were given to all the participants at that time, but the full funding for those service credits was not made by the city. So, in essence, we were playing catch-up.
I see. We've been playing catch-up, and in 2007, which was a bad stock market year, we had to put in 39.8% of...
No, that is not the contribution that is made by the city. It is actually the, getting to Councilmember Wright's statement, it is the portion of that accrued liability that was actually funded at that point in time.
So, we want that to be higher?
Yes. I... You want it to be 100%?
We want it to be 100%. Okay, that's a good clarification for me. Thanks, the rest is beyond me with this short period of time.
Yeah, like I say, if you have any questions, just please let me know.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. We'll move to our special session item, followed by the other two special session items. This one is a frustrating ordinance authorizing reimbursement to Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning for demolition of 6502 Sligo Mill Road. Maybe we can have a little presentation on this from the deputy city manager, and then we'll move towards putting it on the table.
Thank you. I'll start 11 years ago, when Councilmember Siemens and Councilmember Robinson and Catherine Tunis were members of the Master Plan Advisory Group as we were preparing...
Along with others?
Along with many others, while Park and Planning was preparing the Tacoma Park Master Plan, which was then adopted in 2000. The biggest controversial issue during that time was the Poplar Mill-Sligo Mill area, which is mostly natural area along Sligo Mill Road, New Hampshire Avenue, Poplar, Ray Road, that's along the Tacoma branch stream. And this area was an area that we wanted to see kept as natural open space, and it had been zoned under Prince George's County zoning for townhouses. We urged that it not be zoned for townhouses. That was the only battle that we lost in the, in the master plan discussion as it went through the planning board and the district council, which is the county council. Although we lost the battle on the zoning, we were persuasive in getting language in the Tacoma Park Master Plan to protect this area if Tacoma Park would buy the land. And despite that, and I think Councilmember Siemens and some of his friends were particularly persuasive, got Park and Planning to start buying the land. And in fact, they purchased the bulk of the land of Sligo Mill and Poplar Mill that surrounds the property, 6502 Sligo Mill Road, with a small contribution, about a quarter of one of the subdivision costs provided by the city over time. In the middle of this parcel is, of open space, is a privately owned parcel, and if you see in the package, there's an area, the green is the publicly owned open space, the yellow is... space, the yellow is a single family parcel of 21,000 square feet. And this parcel's right in the middle. It's mostly part of the tree area of the, of the land with a small house on it. And for years, this house has had code violations that periodically get brought up. Sometimes it's been vacant, sometimes it's had not kept up with taxes. The property owner has long since been deceased, and a variety of heirs are in charge of the property. We've kept our eye on this property, the, to see if at some point it could be added to the natural open space. We did learn that a bank was involved in it, in the ownership, or trying to get the ownership at some point. We tried to find out information from the bank, and we're not provided information. And then we were fortunate to actually have, I was actually able to have conversations with one of the heirs of the property. And that person was interested in making sure that if something had to happen, that they would no longer own the house, that it become part of the park. I connected that person with Bill Grease, who's the land acquisition expert from Park and Planning, who was the person who made the other arrangements for purchase of the open space. He spoke with a different company that was involved, and with one of the heirs. And has had some quite good success in getting this other company interested and willing to sell the property to Park and Planning if that process goes forward. However, Park and Planning, and we had this discussion a little bit earlier with some of the other folks from Park and Planning who are here, is rather tight on funds. They wanted to know, their, most of their acquisition efforts are up county. It was useful to find a way to show that we have partnerships, what was the leverage that we could do, something that would make this a good selling item for Park and Planning to invest the money in this parcel. And so for a very small amount of money, up to $25,000, to contribute to this whole project, it looks like the project can go forward where Park and Planning does the bulk of the work, pays the bulk of the money for the acquisition of this parcel, and then turns it into open space. It's, I think, something quite a benefit to the city. And I know that we were also in talking with one of the heirs, trying to find some way to kind of memorialize their family and their history as part of Tacoma Park, which, you know, I think is very important. The house has been there a long time, the family's owned it for quite a long time. What this involves at this point is the authorization by the council to make a contribution to this acquisition effort, which in this case, we kind of chose the cost of the demolition portion of the project. That will allow Park and Planning to proceed in the negotiations. And provided they come through, and the negotiations move forward, then the property would be purchased by Park and Planning after it had been demolished and turned into public parkland and added to this parcel.
Okay. Before I go to my colleagues, I just want to get one or two points clarified. It was a little unclear from how you phrased it, the current ownership of the, of the property.
It's a little bit uncertain. I mean, the, my understanding is that there's a Florida company that has owned, has control of the property.
And this is through tax sale?
That's my understanding, yes.
And if Park and Planning were not to acquire this property, that company could dispose of the property in a manner that they chose to, and with the current zoning, which I assume is RT8.
That's correct.
Townhouses could be built on that property.
That's right. And it's a 21,000 square foot lot, so there could be a number of townhouses on the side.
And that would be a buy right development.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you for presenting this. I'm in favor of this. I think it's a good use of our funds. It's, I have a question on the sheet with the green and the yellow. I see a small lot where the house is, and then two more lots, longer lots.
Those were, those were old lots. The, the entire yellow thing is one parcel, it's just kind of indicating the history that it had been several lots sometime in the past.
Okay, thank you. And so Park and Planning owns all the green?
That's correct.
The large part of the forest. If things go as we hope, the, that 21,000 square feet would be added to their, their existing ownership situation?
That's right.
Okay. I know there's been a, a little bit of concern about tearing down an old house. I, I think in this situation, it's justified. I think I heard that this was the last house in Tacoma Park to be without indoor plumbing. I don't remember if that was. In any case, I'm, I'm in support of this, and I'll be glad to move it when the time comes.
I would take that as a motion, and I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Wright?
I'm supporter of this, because Councilmember Robinson wants it to happen in his ward, as well as I think it's, you know, there's rare opportunities to get this amount of contiguous parcel in a, in a surrounding park area. And the idea that if it doesn't happen, it could, that opportunity would be lost forever, so I'm supportive of that. I would also hope that we could examine other decrepit structures in the city for demolition, including 36 Philadelphia, which continues to be an eyesore to the surrounding neighbors, including Councilmember Robinson's, right next to his backyard.
We look into the building.
Yes, because you look into it because there's now, now no back on the building.
Correct.
And that is a situation where we could actually recoup the money eventually when, when the property's sold, if we demolish it. Thanks.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes, I certainly do support this, this activity. Do we, two questions. Do we have any idea what the cost of the purchase price could, I know you don't know what it will be, but we have a feeling for the range, given the fact of its zoning and its buy right development potential?
I'd better not say out loud.
You can mumble.
I will say that the potential value of the property is much less because of the condition of the house. And so part of this is, at this point, I think that Park and Planning will be getting a good deal, but it's approximately 10 times the cost of the demolition, so I can kind of get a sense of that.
Then my, that leads me to my second question, which is that I hope we don't start demolition until the deal is signed, because I'd hate to do us to spend the money to demolish something, and some developer comes along and says, "Thank you very much."
Yes, if I can be clear, the, the whole project would need to be signed off on before we would, before anything would happen. The company that would do the demolition has to be approved by Park and Planning. They, my understanding is that there's a certain company that, after receiving a number of bids, that Park and Planning is recommending, and that's the one that the company would use that currently is in control of the property. They would demolish the property first before the acquisition would go through. So there's not a sense, and then Park and Planning would pay for the cost of the demolition and the cost of the acquisition, then we would reimburse Park and Planning for the demolition portion of that cost.
Well, I guess I'm confused.
So it will, it will certainly have gone through by the time anything would come to Tacoma Park.
But I mean, why would you demolish it before you've acquired it?
Park, it is part of the, it's part of the arrangement that Park and Planning is dealing with that.
Well, I realize it's their business, it just seems, they're exposing themselves to the fact that until they got a deal, the developer could always just back out. Am I, or am I just missing something?
They're, they're working on a contract, I think it's, it's part of the arrangements.
Okay, that's all I need to say, thank you.
And, and if I can just get a little bit more clarification on, I, on the, on our contribution toward the demolition, the, choosing that aspect of it is, my sense is, is a convenient way to say that we are contributing toward a portion of this project in order to make it, get, get the funding necessary from Park and Planning, giving competing interests for their capital acquisitions.
That's correct.
And it's a continuation of the partnership that we've had with Park and Planning all along in the acquisition of that property. They, they bought the existing parcels, but we had some costs that we contributed toward that acquisition as well in the past, and this is a continuation of that partnership. Was there any, aside from the practical aspects of how we get it to happen now, was there any sense of the city always saying that, you know, we were going to continue to partner in ways that we had in the past to make this project come to fruition? Was, questions have been raised about, you know, was the, was the, was there a policy direction to kind of go this route, or was this just kind of the expedience to get something done?
Well, certainly, the, the city and Park and Planning are bound by a memorandum of understanding about the remaining parkland, and we maintain the parkland, although Park and Planning owns it. So there is a memorandum of understanding between the city of Tacoma Park and MNCPBC. Having, besides that legal document, there's also a really nice working relationship. I give a lot of appreciation to Bill Grease of Park and Planning for the work that he has done on our behalf with, with land acquisition in this, in this region. I, I think he's kind of gone, been very helpful to us. And so I, you know, besides the legal requirement, it, it is a good partnership that I honor.
And, and there was the acquisition of the, of the other piece where there's the Community Garden, which is, which is kind of almost adjacent to this.
That's right, on Orchard.
And that, that was a, a direction that was laid out in the master plan in terms of these, these types of acquisitions, that there was a deficit of public open space in that section of the city that had formerly been in Prince George's County, and there was a desire to increase that open space.
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
If, this should run into difficulty with the, with the owners. Not that I'm, you're predicting that, or anybody is. Do we have, or does the Maryland, does the Park and Planning Commission have condemnation authority to take?
Yes, they do, and they, that's how they got Orchard Avenue. The, I don't think that that's something that will come into play here. Certainly, the members of the family that I've spoken with, although they would love to have, be able to keep their house for a long time, they also are interested in seeing this as, they recognize the value of parkland, and they think that that would be a good thing that they would feel good about.
And I'll just point out that the Orchard Avenue property was also zoned RT8.
That's correct.
Any further council comment? Any public comments?
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis, I'm the former chair of the Tacoma Park Committee on the Environment. I'm a member of the Master Plan Advisory Group long ago. And also, I was a member of the Open Space Plan Committee and the reconstituted Open Space Plan Committee, which looked at that area of the new part of Tacoma Park. I've done so many things, I can't remember them all.
And a member of the Master Plan Advisory Group.
She said that.
Yes, I did mention that.
And the two task force on the other side.
But this has been a very long and complicated journey to form this area of open space here. It's, it's just a beautiful area. If you look at some of the trees there, they're just gorgeous, which is why we raised this in the issue, as an issue a long time ago. I know that as part of the reconstituted Open Space Committee, Terry Siemens, Ann Hoffner, and myself, all saw these two properties, Sligo Mills and Poplar Mills, and the property in between, as a premier open space for the city. And we worked very hard. I know I spent a lot of time negotiating with the owners of Poplar Mill, one owner and the other owner, whatever. We managed to get all of that together. I know I also spent a lot of time lobbying for funding, and as I recall, current comptroller, Peter Francha, who was then our delegate, worked very hard to get some state money that could only go to the county, which is why this became county land with the managing the properties. But at that time, it was always a dream to be able to get this property in the middle, if and when it became available. It was a dream sort of to make a, a sort of park naturalist center out of the house. But my understanding, and I talked to one of the board members of Historic Tacoma, is that the, several members of Historic Tacoma went and looked at the property, and that it is in scary condition. It's not able to be saved. And so demolition really is the safest and most proper route to do this. And I'm speaking to support the city in making this contribution to getting this whole piece of property saved, and hopefully then we'll be able to move forward with having some interpretive trails and things like that in that area. I also wanted to mention that Ann Hoffner, I think, sent an email to at least one council member, again, expressing her support for this.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, for filling us in on your conversations with Historic Tacoma.
Any other public comment on this? Okay, this is a first reading ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, have it. We will move along to our other two items on our special session agenda, but first we have to vote to convene the Stormwater Management Board. Does somebody want to move that?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We move into session as the Stormwater Management Board. The next item is the second reading ordinance authorizing NFY 2011 Stormwater Fund Budget Amendment Number One. We've had first reading of this already. This is what will enable our taking up the following item. Would somebody like to move it?
Remove the ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, second by Councilmember Wright. Is there any council discussion of this item? Any public comment on this item? Since it's a second reading ordinance, we'll quick, please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. The next item is a single reading ordinance approving purchase of a street sweep. Would somebody like to introduce that?
Move. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, second by Councilmember Robinson. Are there council questions or discussion on this? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, it's a single reading ordinance, ordinance, we'll quick, please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
That passes unanimously as well. That brings us to the end of our special session. We'll take a short break and come back for our final session, which is a work session discussion. I've got to get to the right item here. We were moving kind of fast before the break. We're back to our last item, which is the discussion of proposed amendments to the housing code. And I just wanted to point out to my colleagues that we have, there's 15 bullet points in the, in the memo, and Ms. Danes thinks she can get us through this fairly quickly, and wants to get us through this fairly quickly. I'll just point out that if we were to come up with our opinion on each of the first 15 items, and we took only three minutes on each one, this would take 45 minutes. And if we took 10 minutes on each one, it would take two and a half hours. So we want to, we want to keep this short.
Can we break before 12 to get a snack or something like that?
I'd like to get us out of here before 10:30, and Ms. Danes is making noises like she can get us out of here by 10:15.
I would love to be able to do that.
So we'll...
Is there anything controversial about, controversial about your... Is there anything controversial about, controversial about your list?
Oh, what a question, danger.
So I'll.
Just say no.
I'll give you your chance to get us through here quickly. If need be, we're going to move through in lockstep pretty quickly. I even considered at one point using the buttons, the request to speak buttons for a little bit different sense. If we had to, as we get to each one, I'd say, okay, we're at this, we're at this bullet item, and if anybody has a question, hit your light now, and if I see no lights, we'll move on. So if that becomes a method that we want to use, we will, but, no, Councilmember Siemens, that does not count. But Ms. Danes, if you want to lead us through this in fairly quick order, let's see what we can do.
Thank you. About seven years ago, I believe, the council went through and did a very comprehensive update of the Housing Code, Chapter Six. And in the course of time, we've identified at the staff level a number of issues that need to be clarified. Frankly, the wording is bad, or after working with the code for a while, you notice that there are discrepancies in terms of one section, the code requires this, and another section requires something different. So what we've been doing internally is going through and making those minor adjustments. In the interest of saving the council time and perhaps a headache in terms of wordsmithing a lot of those changes, what I'm bringing before you today are more conceptual, more significant changes that we'd like to get your input on before we proceed and incur additional staff time on this, or start incurring legal expenses as we develop proposals that you may not support or endorse. So with that, what I've identified are just some broad concepts that are fairly significant. When we bring this back to the council, you will see an actual document with marked up as far as changes, but frankly, a lot of it's just going to be grammatical, or again, clarifying language based on our experience. As far as the rental housing license section of the Chapter Six, we're proposing deleting in its entirety any reference to the commercial occupancy licenses. This was a program that was initiated by the council, but due for, due to a variety of reasons, primarily limited staff resources, the program was never implemented and has since sunsetted. And if you go through the ordinance, there are huge sections that apply to it, but you don't know that it's not in place until you get to the very last sentence of the ordinance. So we're not proposing to reestablish that, but to delete the references to that in the code.
Any questions about that one? Councilmember Snipper.
What was the original purpose?
The original purpose was to establish a program that would ensure the annual inspection of all commercial properties in Tacoma Park, based on just the exterior of the properties. We haven't had enough staff to do that. The fee schedule that was approved by the council at that time frankly wasn't sufficient to cover the additional costs for staffing, and we've been dealing with that on a, on a more informal basis in terms of dealing with a complaint basis, or as we go through, doing a lot of our outreach on New Hampshire Avenue Corridor and University Avenue, for example, or even in the Old Town and Tacoma Junction areas, we've been dealing with it on complaint places or inspections that are initiated by staff after interacting with a tenant.
And a follow-up. Did you report to the council that you had decided to change how you were implementing this provision?
It was not specifically after the first year or two, when it, because it would be part of the budgeting discussion.
Right.
And then this sunsetted in 2007.
Right. Councilmember Schultz?
I gather that this does not have anything to do with the certificate of occupancy that a business has to get in order to be able to open for business.
Correct. It'd be similar to a business license, and the inspection would be limited solely to the exterior of the property or the site.
So the Property Maintenance Code?
Property Maintenance Code. There are three items that we're proposing. We'd like some comment from the council. One is to clearly define where surface parking areas could be established on a lot. Right now, one of the biggest challenges we have is when people throw down a bunch of gravel in their front yard and then park four cars. A lot of people are not supportive of that approach to off-street parking, and we're hoping that, depending upon the council feedback, that we might be able to at least identify where it could be placed on the lot, be it on the side or in the back of the property. There's a possibility we may not be able to do this because of the zoning code. It's sort of, zoning code, it sort of creeps into that territory, but we'd like some feedback from you as to whether or not we should even pursue it any further. Second proposal that we're asking for your feedback on is a similar type of restriction in the placement of those temporary storage pods, you know, the ones that you rent out and you throw in your driveway, and it's there four years later, kind of a thing. It's not a problem on a regular basis, but we have had a lot of complaints about properties where that seems to be an extension of the house and ongoing storage, and it's not necessarily intended for that purpose.
Let's hold up a second and go back to the first bullet. Councilmembers Clay and Siemens had questions on that.
Do you want me to go first? I'm certainly interested in limiting the impermeable surface and limiting the places to park cars, so you can't park 10 cars on your single-family lot, whether you pave it or throw gravel down on it. But I'm concerned that restricting the parking areas to side or rear yards, for example, my house, you wouldn't, I park in front of my garage because my garage is too small for my car, but it's not the side or the rear yard of my house because of the layout of the lot, so I think there has to be some consideration for that.
The intent is not to necessarily restrict driveways and parking areas in front of garages, but more where the entire front yard is basically a parking lot?
Yeah, that's just not clear here, so we could just be clear about, about that. People should be able to park a car or two on their property, but maybe not 10 used car lot. And I just wanted more information, addition of restrictions on the placement and duration of temporary storage facilities, the storage pods or containers. We were talking, does this include the restrictions where they put them in front of their house? This is just on their property, so they couldn't endlessly have a pod on their property either?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
The restriction for the parking surfaces, you know, it's not clear, it says residential areas, it's not clear you're talking about just single-family homes. And I know that, like, some of the work that's being done right now at 7610 Maple Avenue, they're possibly contemplating putting parking surfaces in the front of that building. And so I'm not sure that that wouldn't be acceptable. Seems like that might be acceptable, so I think this could be difficult to word, so that it's clear, but, and gives you the flexibility you want, but isn't left to someone's discretion on whether it works or doesn't work.
So you would like, you're supportive of it, but not necessarily in all cases, well, I shouldn't say it that way, multifamily or more commercial-related properties, it may be more appropriate to have commercial.
Right.
Or parking in the front.
Right.
Of the property, yeah.
On the other hand, the gist of the movement about how to do appropriate commercial is to put the parking in the back, not the front.
Right. Again, these are conception, just general concepts, I'm just going to feed, get your feedback, but I understand what you're trying to do.
Yeah, I think that, I can think of examples where I think this would be great, but I can't think of how you would word it, that it would be, that it wouldn't just eliminate some things that would be appropriate.
I have confidence you can figure it out.
See, and I don't.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robinson.
Well, that's the difference. Did Councilmembers Clay and Robinson have things, or did I not get a light turned on?
I did.
You did, okay. Councilmember Robinson?
I think I will, too.
And on this point, I guess I'm curious about whether it needs to, it's going to be, the intent is to codify it? You can put cars on this portion of your lot and not on that portion of your lot? Or whether you will be asking for the authority to make decisions on a case-by-case basis?
It would have to codify it to some extent, and we're looking at the creation of additional parking as opposed to restricting existing, or placing limitations on existing parking areas. The biggest challenge, again, that we have run into is people who have decided to move all of their cars into their front yard in a residential zone, typically a single-family. They're parking on the grass, they get a citation for parking on, or notice a violation for parking on the lawn, then they throw down a bunch of gravel, and then the next thing you know, it's just a big parking lot with a house in the back. So we're looking at limiting the expansion of existing parking areas to the side or the rear of the lot.
And is the, is the impervious, percentage of impervious surface currently controlled in any way, either through zoning or any other?
It's controlled, controlled through zoning ordinance.
Okay, so there's, there's already a percentage of impervious surface element of the zoning code?
Correct.
So we would be supplementing that in some way by restricting the location of the impervious surface?
That's the intent. Again, because it sort of sneaks into that whole section or the whole zoning legislation, I'm not sure if we can do this, but we wanted to see if you were supportive of it before we even try.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah. Conceptually, I'm supportive of it. We were just, Councilman Robinson was just referring to impervious service, surfaces, but I think that's really, that's only one concern. What you're describing is people just throwing gravel down, more or less eliminating the grassy, or, you know, the natural area in front of their house and putting cars there. And of course, my first thing would be, well, why wouldn't the zoning ordinance by its own, in its own right, disallow that? But apparently, you're saying that under the current Montgomery Housing, zoning ordinance, somebody has a single-family house could theoretically pave everything.
I don't know that.
Roughly.
I don't know that for a fact, but I do know that it's problematic to get certain aspects of the zoning ordinance enforced.
Right.
Not because it's not in the zoning ordinance, but because there is one person who represents this entire part of the county that is responsible for all zoning complaints. This would give us the authorization to do some enforcement through the Property Maintenance Code at the local level.
Yeah, well, I'm interested in seeing what you come up with. I'm not going to take time now to propose things, but I, I do think it's a worthy thing because I think it's really destructive of property values, not to mention the environment.
Yeah, because the concern in the past has been, no matter what you throw down in the front yard, if there's tree roots and you're parking there, that's compacting everything.
Correct.
So my sense is everyone's conceptually, or supportive of this, conceptually concerned about how it actually turns out?
Yes.
Okay. Storage pods, any?
I didn't hear any negative reaction to that one.
The third bullet would be to see whether you're supportive of the limitation, establishing a limit on how long a temporary maintenance measure can be in place, i.e. the dreaded blue tarp on the roof that's been there for years and currently is not a violation of the Property Maintenance Code because it's in good nick. What we're proposing is establishing some type of limitation on when the city becomes first aware that that particular temporary maintenance measure has been, is in place, and then starting the clock from there in terms of what that property owner needs to either make the repair or pull a building permit to do whatever construction work is required. Building permits are valid for a period of one year. And we're tentatively kicking around the idea, because we assume that this one will be supported by the council as a whole, six months, because it can take that long to get a building permit or a statutory work permit issued by the county if you are in certain districts within the City of Tacoma Park.
And let me call on Karnak. I don't know if anybody remembers Karnak?
Karnak the Magnificent.
Yes, John Carson on The Tonight Show. Karnak, the answer is yes. Councilmember Wright?
Yes, 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 and yes. I'm very supportive of this. I would even go further to say maybe that it has to be a work permit with active construction site going on after the six-month time period, because a work permit's relatively inexpensive, and you could probably renew those for a period of time without actually doing any work.
I'll check into that, I'm not sure.
Great, thanks. But I'm confident that you'll do the wording correctly.
We will try to come up with something so that we don't have to talk to you about it anymore.
Councilmember Clay? Oh, sorry, Snipper.
Thank you. Quick question on, actually, this one on the restrictions on the placement and duration of the storage facilities. Both of these seem to me to have a need for what I'll call a good cause exemption possibility. And so I would urge you to think about under what circumstances that, that might be appropriate. It would be, they could be quite limited, you know, but there are occasionally circumstances where something comes up that, you know, adhering to a strict limit just doesn't make sense.
Great. As an aside, and not to delay the conversation, court enforcement staff tries to do that, recognizing, I mean, even now with various property maintenance code violations, recognizing there may be circumstances beyond the control of the property owner due to illness or whatever. So we try to do that now, but we don't always have that flexibility.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I entered this discussion with my usual skepticism, rather than the confidence that Councilmember Wright exudes. I, you know, Tacoma Park prides itself on its many artists in the community, and so I think there's a difference between tarps that are there to cover up holes in the roof and drapes that are done by artists like Cristo around the country, so. Interested to see your wording. Thank you.
We can take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wright with three bullet.
No, I just want to clarify that the point of writing the ordinance isn't, is not that you get to stop talking to me, but that we can actually solve the blue tarp, which is probably causing a deteriorating roof and is an eyesore for the residents of Cedar Avenue, and many other, or other, not many, but when this comes up in other places.
Yes. I like talking to you, it was fantastic.
Okay, so we have direction on that one, next.
The fourth one is more administrative. There's a large section in the Property Maintenance Code that deals with a formal hearing if a property owner decides that they really don't want to take the graffiti off of their wall. The hearing is conducted by the city manager, and we've never used it. We tend to get the graffiti off the wall before we even get to that point, and if we can't get the graffiti off the wall, we will typically go in and get it removed, or we can go through the court process. The original language that was incorporated into ordinance was pulled from another code in Baltimore, I believe, and while at the time it was established, I don't, it was felt to be relevant or useful tool, I don't think it's relevant very longer, so we would like to delete that in its entirety.
Plutter of lights. Councilmember Clay?
Does this mean that code enforcement's going to be dealing with the bamboo and the noxious weeds under note number one?
No, we are not dealing with bamboo and noxious weed. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
I just want to take this opportunity, because it crosses my mind, that there's some graffiti on the other side of the electric box at the bottom of Grant Avenue on Maple that you don't ordinarily see from the street, but if you go around that electric box, you'll see it. It's, it needs to be removed.
Councilmember Snipper?
Thank you, Mayor. As was alluded to earlier, we do have a number of artists in our community, and I urge you to include some language that addresses the issue of somebody who considers it art and not graffiti.
We tend to make that a determination, or we tend to allow the police department to make that determination, but yes.
Some, just some wording to that effect, so that we have not, you know, offended the artists in the community would be helpful.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would suggest that, that the property owners' placement of graffiti on their own property might be a good measure of whether they consider it to be art or, or not. But I certainly support anything that will help us to remove graffiti in an expeditious manner. At the same time, I think it's important that there will be language to safeguard the property owner's interests so that, you know, they, there is adequate notification and opportunity for the property owner to remove the graffiti before incurring costs from the city.
Okay. Next.
There are two notes in the property maintenance code. One, because there are sections in the ordinance itself that deal with issues that are often brought to our attention, that we're proposing possibly be incorporated within the property maintenance, because, because, so it's on one spot. One is including the language that's currently in the trees and vegetation section that prohibits vegetation, that obstructs the sidewalks and traffic. We're not looking at enforcing the bamboo law or noxious weeds because frankly, we don't have the technical expertise to do that. This is basically, if there's stuff all over the sidewalk and nobody can walk on it, wouldn't be able to encourage the property owner to remove it. The other one is the clearing of snow and ice. I'm not sure if any of you have looked at the ordinance dealing with the clearing of snow and ice, but currently it says, "Snow and ice shall be removed from sidewalks, blah, 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 by 7:00 p.m. on the day of which it has fallen or accumulated, or by the end of four hours of daylight after the fall or accumulation, whichever is later." And then there's very specific language about when sidewalks need to be cleared in commercial areas. We're proposing that we just establish a time at the end of the day when people get a chance to have to have their sidewalks cleared. The way this is phrased now, it can be confusing for property owners, and not everyone gets home by 7:00 o'clock at night. The other option we have is to look at language that the county currently uses, which allows for, requires the property owner to remove snow and ice within 24 hours after the end of the precipitation that caused the condition. And then also recognizes that if a snowplow deposits snow or ice on a sidewalk, after once someone has complied with this section, they've cleared their sidewalk and we put snow back on it, they have another 24 hours to clear it. And it further gives the city or the county executive at the county level at least, an opportunity to establish a different deadline in cases of severe conditions like we experienced last year. So we're, are you supportive of changing the ordinance-
Yes.
-regarding the, when the snow has to be removed? Right now, it has to be taken off the sidewalk by 7:00 o'clock at night.
I support it. I support it, and I'm, I had constituents where it was particularly tough on those constituents with the snow being put on their sidewalk on Manor Circle, because it was tough for the plows to get up there, et cetera. And they were, they were upset that the snow was put on their sidewalk, and then they were conflicted because they didn't know if they had to shovel it off. So clarification and some leeway is helpful there. And I have one question on note, first note. I was trying to see if the height of vegetation in local lawns, if you were going to incorporate Title 12 to restrict the height of vegetation in local lawns or to other, to deal with the height of vegetation in local lawns in some other way?
My apologies, I forgot that. The code that deals with trees and vegetation limits the height of vegetation to 10 inches, but the property maintenance code actually says 12. So we're proposing that it be consistent throughout and be 12 inches across the board, rather than the 10 inches in one section and 12 in another.
And they both refer to the height of a certain percentage of the?
It just deals with the height in general.
Strictly the height. So as soon as a blade hits that height?
You don't do that, but-
So it's a percentage?
It's not specifically in the code, if I recall, as far as how much it has to be.
I thought it was a percentage.
There's a percentage in the trees section, which I'm not familiar with, but I do know that it says a certain percentage of the undergrowth has to be of a, can't be over a certain height. But we're just dealing with overgrown yards. That's, from the property maintenance code section and the height of the vegetation, we're dealing with overgrown yards.
Is there leeway in the maintenance and management? Is there leeway in this to allow for people to convert their lawns to more natural environments?
Code enforcement has been advised to show discretion because there are the-
That's the word I'm after.
Wildlife refuge, backyard refuge circumstances.
Okay. So we don't need to address that here? That's already addressed in the-
That's something we can look at when we actually draft language.
Thank you.
So there will be the ability to weasel out of it if you have a wildlife refuge?
A wildlife refuge.
To certain extent.
Weasel being the operative word.
Yeah.
Councilmember Schultz.
Is there a significant difference between 10 inches and 12 inches, or is it just that you want to have?
It's two inches.
We would like some consistency with it.
No, I know that it's, I know that it's two inches. I just didn't know whether that was a significant, that two inches was significant. That was the key word in my question.
It's even more basic than that because the 12 inches are included in the property maintenance code section, which we've adopted at the county level.
Oh, okay.
So if we were not, if we were not to make those changes, and you were cited under the trees and vegetation code for having 10 inches, but Colleen, as landlord, had the same grass at the same height, she wouldn't actually get a citation until it was 12 inches. So we would like to have it the same across the board.
I'll have you know that I am a landlord-
I know.
And the measurement is six inches. They ticket me at six inches.
In college, what?
Yeah. I can have my whole lawn over there, it'll be this high, and there'll be some spot that will be six inches, and they'll give me a citation.
Here, here. I had a follow-up, I'm not quite done yet. On the snow, the sidewalk, on the, snow on the sidewalk issue, can we give, I mean, what I was going to say is that anything you can come up with that accommodates everything from our normal two-inch, three-inch snowstorms to the blizzard that we had in February, you should be considered a founding father in your writing ability. But I was thinking beyond, just short of that, would it be appropriate to give the city manager the authority to waive these rules under, under, you know, her discretion, let's say, because, thinking about our blizzard situation?
The county does do that. Here's how it's phrased. "The executive may order a different deadline or conditions for removing snow and ice during or immediately after a severe or unusual storm or other public safety condition." So it does give you some flexibility.
Okay. That's all I just want to suggest. Thanks.
So I think you've got direction on those. So we're going on landlord-tenant relations?
There are no significant changes in landlord-tenants, primarily administrative housekeeping stuff. There is a minor change right now that we're proposing under rent stabilization, though we'll probably come back to you at a later date with possibly more comprehensive modifications to the rent stabilization. But what we're proposing right now is that the list of properties that are exempted without an application from rent stabilization requirements be expanded to include two-unit owner-occupied rental facilities. In your additional revised information memo, this was one of the questions that was raised by Councilmember Snipper. Essentially what this is, are, these are properties that were either originally designed to have two dwelling units within a single structure, or we are discovering they are single-family homes that have an established accessory apartment but were grandfathered in back at the beginning of time when Prince George's County was incorporated into Montgomery County. And those properties are not on the accessory apartment list, and they're not required to go through that process. So we're proposing that they, along with all the other accessory apartments in Tacoma Park, be automatically exempted from rent stabilization. Prior to the ordinance change, back in 2005, I think, they were already, they were exempt from rent stabilization at that time. They were identified as a new category because of some challenges that we were facing, and we think it would be good to put them back into the mix of not being required to apply for an exemption from rent stabilization. It affects 32 properties, from what we can tell. Okay?
I have a quick- I couldn't tell whether that was a later on.
Yeah, it's a new one. Any way for us to exempt ourselves from the accessory apartment requirement in the county based on what you just said, that we have 32 that are already exempt?
Not to my knowledge. And frankly, I wouldn't recommend that because many people establish accessory apartments in, in circumstances, in places within their structure that are not necessarily safe for the person occupying it due to egress issues or proximity to unfire-walled heating and ventilation systems and things like that.
Or I guess it would mean that we would have to oversee the legality or the adherence to code, to maintenance of those, those entities.
Right, and then it also has implications with the zoning ordinance as well.
Okay, thank you.
Questions on that section? Okay, we'll move along to Colta.
There are three changes we're proposing to the section governing commission of landlord and tenant affairs. The first is to expand the list of properties that have, or parties that have a standing to file a COLTA complaint to include the city of Tacoma Park. Right now, the only people that can apply or can file a complaint is an affected tenant or land, or tenant or tenants, a landlord, or a tenant associate, association that has been established to represent those tenants within that building. We are finding, particularly in cases where of the larger rental facilities, 100 or more units, where it's problematic to get a tenants' association formed, and it's not terribly effective to go on a case-by-case, individual tenant-by-individual tenant basis to address issues that impact the facility in its entirety. That could be illegal fees, changes in rules and regulations, or illegal rents that are being charged by the property owner. By including the city of Tacoma Park as a list of a, a party authorized to file a complaint, it would allow us to go through the COLTA process, and they could make a determination as to whether or not a concern that city staff or the council has, has merit and make a ruling on, on behalf of the city or the landlord at that point in time.
Questions on that one?
No, thank you.
Councilmembers Clay and Ms. Schultz.
Why do we want to reduce the time from three years to a year?
There, there are two statute of limitations, if you will, on the code enforcement ordinance. For all complaints, with the exception of illegal rents or illegal fees, a tenant or a landlord has one year from, to file a complaint. With the case of an illegal rental or, or rent or an illegal fee, they have three years from the occurrence. And for a variety of reasons, that becomes problematic because it's sort of like a revolving door as far as when that three-year window opens up and closes. Because if you charge rent on May 1st of 2007, your three-year statute of limitations ends in 2010, but on June 1st, then it opens back up again. So we're proposing or recommending that it be one year across the board, and then that, rather than doing from the date of occurrence, which is what the illegal rental statute of limitations is triggered on now, is when the date of knowledge, which would be when the city was, or learned that an illegal rent or fee had been charged. And that typically happens when we have a tenant come in who's expressed a concern about one matter, and as we talk to them, we learn more about the fact, or learn more about what they're being charged for rent, we check the rent reports and identify an illegal rent.
So this puts the onus on the land, I read your other explanation, this puts the onus on the landlord to have to prove that they had informed them of what the legal rent was in some way, or, because it says the landlord then would have to establish that they had knowledge of it beforehand?
The landlord would have to prove that the date of knowledge had, that the tenant who had filed the complaint knew of the situation prior to, prior to them actually filing the complaint to the date of knowledge. If a landlord's charging-
The landlord would have to prove that they knew for a year and didn't do anything about it?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Schultz.
In regard to the expansion of the listing of properties, I'm thinking of the four-unit buildings, of which there are many up on Lochne and on Kennewick, are those the kind of properties that would be an example of what you're talking about, where, for example, you might have a berman problem that seems to be emanating from more than one of those buildings? You're not sure which, but there needs to be, there's a problem and the landlords are sort of pointing the finger at each other, and, and there's no tenant association because each property is owned by a different landlord. Is that kind of an example of, of what you're trying to get at?
As far as allowing this-
The city to be a complainant to the COLTA?
That could be an example. In a situation like that, it would be a tricky one to follow through because we'd have to need, have to have the supporting documentation to justify the complaint. But it could be, it would be an example of a case where the city could step in when the individual tenants, when it's not effective to have the individual tenants file individual COLTA complaints and it's impractical for all the tenants to get together as an association.
Yeah, I would, whatever, I would, just, I would ask that you try to keep that situation in mind as you're kind of framing your language on that, so as to, to give the city as, as much flexibility as necessary to, to take care of those kind of situations, or that one up there. Thank you.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a perfect example of this in my ward not too long ago, in which a landlord told tenants that they were, had an option to buy his condos, and that he charged them substantially more than the legal, legal rent. They had no real option to buy his condos or any such thing. And it took them a long time to figure out what was going on. And then, of course, they had to try to get everybody in the building together on it, but that didn't happen. So some of them filed to try to, a COLTA complaint to try to get their money back. That took a long time. If the city had been able to file in that situation, then they would have filed for the whole building all at once and gotten everybody's money back, instead of people, you know, moving out, losing out on their, getting refunds. And then the, I really liked the change to the knowledge of the, the one year from the date of knowledge of the illegal charge because that eliminates this exact problem you were talking about, where the, how the clock starts and stops. It just made it really hard for these tenants to get what they, what they needed, get repaid for the overcharges and rent and so on. And it would allow the city to do a complaint when they become aware of a whole building, as you were indicating, and not have to try to first organize all the tenants and, you know, get everybody together on it, which can really take a lot of time.
Next section?
Sale of rental facilities. We're proposing eliminating the point-of-sale inspection. Right now, there's language in the ordinance that allows a prospective purchaser to request a special inspection of the rental property. We have had one request in the last seven years for a point-of-sale inspection, due in large part, I think, to the contract- in large part, I think, to the contract that we've entered into with the county. Most property owner, or prospective property owners will come in, look at the property file, and the inspection reports are current enough and detailed enough that it, they feel confident that we're not going to do any better job than that, and oftentimes, they would bring in their own inspector for a more structural analysis of the building than you would get going through and doing a property maintenance code inspection.
Councilmember Clay.
So maybe I don't quite understand what this is, because when I read it, at first I thought if you eliminate a mandatory point-of-sale inspection and you got into a market like we had for a while, where before you could even purchase a place, you had to waive all of the inspections to become the selected bidder, but that's, we're not talking about single-family houses.
We're not talking about single-family owner-occupied properties.
And that's my last question. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have a ride home, so I got to wait for the rest of you guys.
Tenant opportunity to purchase.
Tenant opportunity to purchase, two changes. We're proposing that the city of Tacoma Park be added to a list of entities with a right to purchase. It would be very similar to what the county does now. It would not require you to actually buy anything, but if there was a property where it was important, where the council was interested in stepping in and purchasing it for redevelopment purposes, it would give you that authority. Right now, the county can do it, but it's for larger properties than are regulated under our tenant opportunity to purchase ordinance.
I think you have lots of positive nods on that one.
Yeah, this one's a great one.
The second one is to extend the time period for a tenant to secure financing for the purchase of a single-family rental facility, from 30 days to 60 days.
Reality seems entirely reasonable.
Yeah. Especially if they weren't in the market for a house and they aren't pre-qualified for a mortgage and all of that. There are drawbacks to it, but from a tenant's perspective, it may make the most sense.
Well, next section.
Yeah, that may, that'll be interesting to see when it comes back, because there obviously could be concerns from the seller.
Yeah. And then the unsafe buildings, we're proposing to add language from the Montgomery County Code that requires consultation with the county's historic preservation commissions and staff when a building is declared to be unsafe or a public nuisance and it's in a historic district, or has been identified as an historic property. It's already in place now, but by putting it, but in, at the county level, by incorporating it within our ordinance and making it a requirement upfront, it may expedite the process for changes to designated properties. Won't make it any shorter, but it won't, it won't make it significantly shorter, but at least we'll get that conversation started earlier.
So it says here that this won't be included with the other changes, that there's a lot more work to do.
That first little point we would incorporate in the changes that we'll bring back to you later this fall. The second is a note that we are exploring different ways of getting more control over properties that have basically been abandoned by their, by the property owner of record. And there are some examples in Baltimore, there, there's one in Cumberland, and there are other models I've worked with in Minnesota and Iowa that allows the city to sort of assume receivership, if you will, and can take responsibility for a property for a defined period of time. But we're not, we will not include that within this initial round of edits that we'll be presenting to you, because we need additional, need to do additional research on that.
That's a great one. Glad you're doing it.
It could be really, I'm hoping it will be effective. I'm hoping this is possible first. So my sense is that pretty much everything's on here, I just have to be really careful how I word it. Again, we need to go.
I have one question. The violations and enforcement are not on there, but is, is the escalation process for violations codified in the code, or is that just a decision about how we choose to do enforcement? By that, I mean when warnings are given, what the warnings say, how much time people have to resolve, all that sort of stuff.
That's governed in large part by the state law in terms of, as I understand it, there are very specific requirements at the state level in terms of what process you need to go through to notify someone of a certain types of citations or court actions. Our violations section deals primarily with identifying Class A, Class B, Class C types of violations and the fines associated with that. And then there's also a limitation on the amount of fine, the maximum fine that a city can impose, which is governed in turn by state law.
Thanks. Okay. Pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.